I will call the December 7th meeting of the FALMA zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Ken Foreman, current chair, and I'll begin by asking everyone to please silence your cell phone, including me, and introduce the board to you all. So from your left, Gary Potamus, who's an associate member of the board, PJ Hury, who's, what are your vice chairman? And Tim Beal, who's clerk of the board, Ed Van Kuren, voting member of the board, Paul Murphy, voting member, and Robert Dugan, who's an associate member of the board. So that, as I'm sure many of you know, we're charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and considering requests for special permits, variances in appeals, as provided by those bylaws that have been approved by town meeting and by the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. And our decisions are made through a public hearing process. So our goal, of course, is to hear testimony from the applicants and from the public and allow full and fair discussion of each project prior to rendering a decision, project or appeal. To begin each hearing, we will ask the clerk to read a public announcement of that hearing and present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments. The applicant then, or the applicant's representative, will then be allotted 15 minutes to make a presentation. If more time is required, the applicant can request that, and by vote of the board, that can be granted. The board will then question the applicant, and then we will invite the public to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project. Refrain, in other words, from making personal derogatory statements and can include an opinion in favor or opposed. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand at that time when I invite for public comment. Go to the podium and state your name for the record. Address the board. We're the ones that are considering the application, and so refrain from talking to the public or the applicant. Do state, if I didn't already say this, do state your name for the record so our recording secretary can get that into the minutes. If the board feels we have enough information, we will then close the hearing. We may have board discussion and render a decision, or we may ask for a draft to be, a draft decision to be created by our zoning administrator for consideration. If we feel additional information is needed, we can continue the hearing to a date certain in the future. Special permits require a supermajority, a four-to-one vote, in order for approval. So with that, I think we're ready to embark on the hearings tonight. We have four hearings, and the first of those is the Climate Foundation, Three Little Harbor Road. This is a court remand regarding an appeal by the building commissioner, of the building commissioner's determination. And, Kim, do you have an announcement to make?
Sure. Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that the Climate Foundation of Woods Hole, Massachusetts, the appellant, apply to the zoning board of appeals pursuant to an order remand issued by land court relative to Climate House Foundation versus the zoning board of appeals, land court case number 16 miscellaneous 000263 regarding appeal number 10815 for subject property located at Three Little Harbor Road, Woods Hole, Massachusetts. And just in the file, there's an order of remand.
Okay, and for the applicant?
For the applicant, my name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney with an office in Sandwich. And with me tonight is the director of Brian Von Hersen and his assistant Rebecca Truman, both of the applicant, the Climate Foundation.
Okay.
Great, may I begin?
Yes, please.
Thank you, through the chair. I represent the Climate Foundation, the owner of the property at Three Little Harbor Road. And the issue before the board tonight is not a project but a question of whether or not the use of the subject property is exempt under Section 242.1 of your bylaw and under Chapter 48, Section 3 of the State and Zoning Act. And as the clerk read through the record, we're here tonight pursuant to a remand order of the court, and that makes this a little bit different than the typical hearing. And I'd like to give a little bit of background, aware of my 15 minutes, to set the stage of why we're here and how we got here and why we think the board should reverse its prior decision. So beginning, the Climate Foundation is a nonprofit and tax-exempt corporation engaged in the business of researching, studying, educating on issues of climate change and carbon balance. The Climate Foundation effectuates these purposes in multiple ways all over the globe, but in the summer, the Climate Foundation's operations are here in Woods Hole at the subject property at Little Harbor Road. The foundation bought that property in 2013 from Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute. Prior to the current use of the property, it was used by HOE for living accommodations for staff, students, and visitors. Before that, it was used by the Pennakese Island School, essentially to the same purpose for living accommodations. And before that, it was a lodging house back in the 1960s. The reason that Climate Foundation purchased the house was to create a summer fellowship program comprised of undergraduate students, postgraduates, and doctoral candidates who would be brought to the facility to study climate change science. Also, the intent of the property was to create a community of scholars to use the other space in the house to attract scientists, professors, and other people in the scientific community to come to the house, to interact with the fellows there, to create an environment where innovation would be the product. The reason that Woods Hole was chosen is obvious to those in the room because of the renowned institutions that call that place home, including HOE, MBL, and the National Academy of Sciences. The idea was to be in the same facilities, using the talent that comes to Woods Hole in the summer. The program began in 2013, and obviously, when it first began, it was a startup program. It was not in its full mode. In order to get the word out for, to people in the community, the program did use the Airbnb website, and this ended up having kind of an unintentional side effect of attracting non-scientists to the property. The foundation at that time had some extra capacity and decided that it would use that capacity occasionally to rent to non-scientist people to make some extra income. This was obviously a mistake. It brought the attention of the use to Mr. Andrew Maddox, who is the former owner of the Sleepy Hollow Motoring. And Mr. Maddox perceived what was happening at the Climate Foundation's facility as competition for his motel. And what he did in April of 2015 was he filed a complaint, and the zoning enforcement officer investigated it but denied that complaint, finding that the foundation was, in fact, an educational institution and was exempt under Chapter 242.1 and under Chapter 48, Section 3, the so-called Dilber Amendment. Mr. Maddox was obviously not satisfied with that outcome, and in June of 2015, over two years ago, filed an appeal with the zoning board. But on the eve of the hearing, he withdrew that appeal, and I had a conversation with his attorney, and his attorney conceded to me that Mr. Maddox did not have standing to pursue that and dropped it. But just a few months later, in August of 2015, the person that lives and owns the property across the street from the foundation at Four Little Harbor Road, an individual named James Garner, brought a new complaint. And we know, as a matter of fact, that Mr. Garner was essentially a front for Mr. Maddox because at the hearing before the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Garner did not appear. He was represented by counsel, and Mr. Maddox appeared and spoke quite a few times at the podium where he now. In any event, at that public hearing, which was held in February 2016 and was continued to April 2016, Attorney Lev Hertz, with quite a bit of what I would consider to be drama, focused on some Airbnb listings that were posted in 2013. Now, mind you, this is three years later. He was using evidence that was, we contended, stale at that point. But in any event, Mr. Lev Hertz persuaded the board that this was what was happening at the property. We were given an opportunity to rebut. We were provided less time than the applicant. And at the end of the day, we argued that the program was much more robust than what was making the case for. And we argued that the use was, in fact, what's called primarily and dominantly educational. And the reason why that catchphrase is important is that, under Chapter 48, Section 3, educational uses are considered to be exempt from zoning. But in 2012, the SJC, our Supreme Judicial Court, said that the use, in order to qualify as exempt, can't be just ephemeral but must actually be primarily and dominantly the use of the property. At the conclusion of the hearing, the board did make a finding, and it is in the board's decision, that Climate Foundation is indeed a nonprofit educational corporation and is, in fact, eligible for treatment as an educational use. But based upon the evidence that was presented and the way that the board viewed it, the board found that the use had not met that test of primary and dominant, and the board found that the use was, in fact, prospective, that the Climate Foundation was describing, and somewhat putting words in the board's mouth, but how the program should be or wanted to be rather than what it was. Climate House disagreed with that, and with all due respect, filed an appeal to the land court. And after the appeal was filed, I reached out to town council's office, and we had a number of conversations. And one of the conversations we had was that this is unlike a project that has, you know, dimensional requirements that are set in stone, and you either meet them or you don't. The use can actually change over time. And so we decided and talked about potentially going to mediation, and we are thankful that the board did agree to that. In fact, we had a mediation session last June over at the Gus Canty facility where Mr. Ed Kirin came and Mr. Foreman came, and Associate Town Council Pat Harris appeared, and it was administered by a retired judge at the land court, Judge Lombardi. And we talked for, I think, approximately five hours, and we talked about what exactly was the Climate Foundation doing, what was it doing at that particular time, which now, in 2016, we were talking about what had happened in 2015 and what was about to happen in 2016. And now, as I stand here, we're actually looking forward to 2017. And we also came to the board, the mediation session, that is, with a set of proposed conditions because we saw that the board was concerned with how the use can continue to change and how can the board find assurance that if the board does grant this to be exempt, how can the board be confident that the use will continue in that manner and not change? And after three or four hours of discussing what's going on at the property, we had another approximately hour or more discussion about those conditions. And at the end of the mediation session, obviously, since we're here now, the two members that were there felt that enough evidence had been presented to warrant a remand. So I worked with town council's office. We filed a motion by agreement, and the court sent us back here to where we are today. At the request of the board, we have submitted an existing conditions plan and a floor plan and a position statement and a booklet of supporting documentation, which should all be in the file. And that gets me to where we are. Why do we think that the board should reverse its decision? And why do we think that the use of the property is robust enough to meet the primarily and dominant test? And I would suggest that I've summarized it in the position statement, but I'd like to hit a few of the salient points. May I ask, Mr. Chair, how far?
You've got about five minutes.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yeah, I'm gonna make it, yeah. I'm gonna somewhat read from my materials, but number one, Climate House no longer uses the Airbnb website and has not used it for two years. The fellowship program has grown substantially. In the first year of operations, the Climate House had one fellow. In 2016, there were five from Princeton, Stanford, and from a university in China. This year, this past summer, there were seven fellows from Princeton, Boston University, and Auburn University. The fellows are actually paid a stipend to come to the facility to study and to work with Climate Foundation. The fellows attend a daily class given by Dr. Von Hersen and other visiting professors, and the class is generally on permaculture and related topics. Each one of the fellows is engaged in a postdoctoral research program on climate change issues. In addition, the Climate House gives a 10-week workshop on marine permaculture and engineering, which is taught at the Climate House. All residents of the Climate House, the fellows, the persons that are employed directly by the foundation, and any other person staying at the house are comprised exclusively of students, teachers, professors, scientists, and documentary filmmakers, all related to climate change and related topics. There are no transient people whatsoever that stay at the property. It is not available for lodging, certainly not available for anyone that's catching the ferry in the morning and wants a place to sleep. That may have happened in year one. It is no longer happening, and it will not happen again. All residents and participants in the Climate House, including the visiting professors that come and stay, participate and are involved with the fellowship program and sometimes give classes. Essentially, what our argument is, in a nutshell, I know my time is starting to run short, is that the use that is there today, well, it closed in the winter, but presently today in the sense of last summer and coming up in the next summer and going forward, is substantially more robust than the evidence that the board heard from the complaining party in 2016 about what was happening in 2013. We're now in 2017 going into 2018, and we would respectfully submit that the use meets the task. I have, after the mediation session, we took input from the two members that were there. We had discussed the conditions, and they had suggested some additional changes, and the set of conditions that have been submitted as part of the packet reflect those changes. So these are a little bit different than what we're discussing at the mediation. They're more robust, I would suggest. The booklet of supplementary materials corroborates the things that are in the position statement. And I want to end on this particular point. The results of the research that are going on at the facility are tangible. Many of them are identified on tab two of the materials, and I'm just gonna cite one or two. Last year, as a result of work done by the fellows, by Dr. Von Hersen and the other people that visit the facility, the Climate Foundation was selected as the winner of the Blue Economy Challenge, which is given by the Australian government, and they were selected out of 250?
220.
220 competitive applications, and they were granted $250,000 as a result. This summer, that grant was actually put to use, and the Climate Foundation used the money to develop an actual tech, equipment, and Dr. Van Hersen can talk about this when I yield the floor, permaculture type of equipment that was actually field-tested off Woods Hole using boats that were rented from MBL, using the knowledge and facilities at Climate House as well as all the fellows. So based upon, I know I only have 15 minutes, but based upon the materials that I've submitted that have summarized here tonight, I would respectfully submit to the board that what's happening here at this facility is a genuine bona fide educational use. It's not a lodging house, and the test has been met sufficient for the board to grant an exemption in this particular case. And again, with the conditions that we're proposing, and we're agreeing that if the board sees fit to grant that exemption, we would submit to these conditions, which includes an annual reporting requirement, that therefore the board has assurance that the use will remain robust and remain consistent with the law that allows an exemption. I'm available for questions. Dr. Von Hersen is available.
Okay, why don't we see if the board has any questions?
Certainly.
Jerry?
No questions.
PJ?
No questions for you.
Kim?
Sure. So I might have just missed, I think, I see, Ed, I think, has something, but did you submit the list of conditions to?
Yes, and I have extra copies, but it was part of the material, but I submitted.
Is it different than the one I have?
Yeah, that's what you're showing now.
Yeah, I have probably one or two, two copies.
What, was it a tab or was it a?
It was a separate document.
Oh, separate, that's why.
The one I have is the result of that meeting.
Okay. Oh, then you.
This is revised.
Yeah, but you shouldn't show me that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll just review these and I'll.
Review that, and you wanna, we can go to Ed, and then come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. During the summer, I went, was in Woods Hole, and I happened to drive down, just curious what was going on. And I went there in a Saturday afternoon at like two, three o'clock, and there was two adults and two kids, the kids like eight and 12 or something, sitting on the porch. And I thought, that kinda looked like a summer, people in summertime having a vacation, you know? And then the other question I have is I noticed there's a lot of, and I noticed the other day when I happened to be in Woods Hole again, there's a lot of black ductile type of, you know, duck work, you know, flexible stuff, all over the ground on one side of the driveway. On the other side, there's some rigid PVC pipe, and what's all that for? It's been there for a long, long time.
This is Dr. Von Hersen.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Van Kirin, for the question. The piping is actually part of our marine permaculture pumps. So what we're doing is providing wave-driven pumps that actually restore overturning circulation to the water. So we did first a two-inch experiment, validated the throughput of that system, then went to four inches, and finally, we did an eight-inch system. And so the PVC pipe that you saw, we've actually recycled a fair amount of it now, is actually just a part of the experimental apparatus.
Nothing to do with the house?
No, nothing to do with the house at all. It's part of the scientific apparatus that we're using to upwell water from the fellow thermocline.
The other question I had was, is there a sprinkler system in that house?
We have a fire alarm system that has a, it was installed by the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, and it has multiple zones. And so it is a system that provides alarms and lights, and it's quite a fancy system. I don't believe it has a sprinkler, per se, but it has all these other elements that HOE put into it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, my pleasure. And to answer your question on the weekend, one of our staff actually had two kids that were also staying with him as part of the summer workshop, and on the weekend, they were probably relaxing, but we were using that porch on the weekdays to build this wave-driven pump, for example.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay.
No questions?
Anything, Robert?
No, no questions.
Kim, you're busy.
Okay. Well, I am, but we'll start, and then I'll probably have others. So I guess I'm just reviewing these conditions, and we'll start with them. So I think some of the representations that you just made were, I guess I'm just concerned, well, okay, I'll ask the question. So you're saying there's a minimum of five fellows, maximum of 16 fellows at any one time?
That's a proposed condition.
Okay.
It fluctuates, as I gave it in my representations.
Yeah.
It's been growing because the program has been growing from its infancy up to getting to kind of critical mass. But as it goes forward, it will fluctuate from year to year based upon winning these challenges and other types of funding that they get from institutions.
Okay, so how many people, I guess, sleep? What are the, how is the bedroom situation laid out? Is it a few people, several people in a bedroom, or does that depend?
It depends. The floor plans show the layout, and I can have Dr. Von Hersen answer this as well, but some of the bedrooms are for single people or a married couple, and others are a little bit more like dormitory style.
Okay, and that direct, you know, a reference to a qualified director. Would that qualified director live on the property?
Yes, and in fact, presently, the apartment at the, I call it the top of the house, but what is it? The hoopla? Yeah, hoopla area. Dr. Von Hersen and Rebecca Truman live there, and presently, Dr. Von Hersen is the director. I wrote qualified director because as the program goes forward, it may, Dr. Von Hersen may not personally be the person, but it will be a qualified person that can administer the fellowship program.
Well, I guess that leads to the question. So what is a qualified person? Aside from someone who can administer a fellowship program, what is, what are the qualifications?
A person that can administer the fellowship program. And so what I mean by that is that the institutions that allow their students to investigate the program, and there are some letters in the files that I've submitted at the last hearing and in this booklet here. For example, I'll take the Princeton program. They don't just allow their students to go anywhere. If they're gonna get college credit or be involved in a legitimate bona fide program, it has to be administered, and I'm a little bit outside of my purview, but the way I understand it is, is if you're going to do postdoctoral research, you have to have a PhD administering the program. You can't have an undergrad or just a graduate of a four-year institution. So I would submit that it's a PhD or other qualified person that can administer the types of high-level education that's going on at the facility.
Okay. Then I think when you were giving your presentation, you referenced, I had written down a 10-week workshop, and then in the proposed conditions, it references a six-to-10-week educational workshop. So I guess why would it vary between six and 10 weeks? And then the second question from that would be, what does the workshop, what does that comprise of? What does that consist of?
I'm gonna let Dr. Von Hersen answer.
Thank you. Yes, the last several years, the workshops have been 10 weeks long. However, the Princeton internship civic service program allows for a range of time periods, and from one year to the next, the time period may vary. The subject period, the subject may vary as well. For example, with permaculture, this last summer, we predominantly were working on marine permaculture, but in previous years, there's also terrestrial permaculture, for example. And so the subject and the duration could vary from one year to the next. But committing to a six-to-10-week annual workshop is something that we're prepared to do.
Okay, so if it's a six-week workshop, think with that, like a month and a half, what would, and you're only here in the summer, what would the use be outside of the workshop period?
Well, we actually prepare for the workshop starting in the spring, and we're, in this case, here in Woods Hole, through the fall as well. So there's a fair amount of preparation and completion, if you will, of the testing and the work. So in that, in this case, we've been actually supporting the research and other education that's been happening in its most intense, of course, in the summertime. But for example, similar, one of the course directors of the physiology course at the Marine Biological Laboratory has stayed with us for the last four years and has been really influential in helping to mentor a lot of our climate fellows. And that program with the physiology course at MBL is, for example, six weeks long, which is a typical duration of many of the summer courses in Woods Hole.
Okay, thank you. Let me see. You also make reference, I guess, in these proposed conditions to guests of the Climate House who are not enrolled in the fellowship program. And I think, I'll just speak because it will lead to my comment on this, because I think last time I sat on the board, last time, and this notion of a community of scholars, which Attorney Wall, you actually brought up tonight, I think, was hit upon fairly well by Attorney Lev Hertz to say that's, that may be insufficient for purposes of Section 3. So if there's people who are residing there outside of the, I guess, the fellowship program, what is their participation in this educational use?
Well, that's a very good question. Thank you for asking it. So we have several examples. For example, this summer, Dr. Peter Coughlin from Stanford and the IDEO Lab in Silicon Valley came and spent an entire week working with us and the students. Now, that was a case where he was actually teaching part of the workshop that we had this summer on permaculture. Similarly, Daniel Swit is an expert in agile engineering teams and technology teams, and he came from Marin County, California, and spent several weeks working with our fellows. So those are examples of visiting faculty, if you will, who actually provided teaching and training for the seven climate fellows that we had this summer. In addition, we have examples, for example, Dr. Lipincoff Schwartz, who's taught, been the course director of the physiology course at the Marine Biological Laboratory for the last four years. And she provides really more of a mentorship role in the sense that the students are encouraged to ask questions about research, about education and courses and the like. to ask questions about research, about education and courses and the like. And also, from time to time, we go and sit in on some of the classes that occur at the physiology course, for example, at the invitation of Dr. Lipincoff Schwartz. Other examples include professors who have stayed with us in previous years from Caltech, including Professor Albar and others. And we've had visitors from MIT, from Caltech, and other places. And they have a combination of skills, sometimes in biology and sometimes in geophysical fluid dynamics or in computational techniques. And while they haven't been teaching the courses directly, they ended up having substantial mentorship of the students and the climate fellows during the summer, because they are professors at renowned institutions, because they have a lot of expertise advising students. This is a more informal mentorship program, but it's one that we found to be invaluable over the last four years of the program.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney, before you go on, I'd like to further respond to that. And if I could respectfully direct your attention to conditions number five, six, seven, eight. Those conditions seek to address that concern that I think you have with regard to what do these other guests do. And what these conditions do is they ensure that all such guests have to have technical backgrounds. I think if you remember, Attorney Leberts was saying, well, how do they filter that? Someone answers Airbnb, and they come and they stay there. It's all a fraud, is essentially what he was saying. What we're putting here are some conditions that provide the board assurance regarding how long the minimum stay is, regarding a required agreement to participate in the program and work with the fellows in a mentoring capacity, among others. And providing guest lectures and consulting and advice. These, these conditions, I think, go to exactly the point that you were inquiring about.
Okay, I think I'll, I'll review them some more, maybe mark them up a little bit. But I see, you know, number eight, persons not participating in the climate house research, and then you say, and other educational programs shall not be permitted to stay at the climate house. And I guess I'm concerned with that, and other educational programs, because then, are we leading back to what the concern was previously, which is, there's not an educational component, or this allows for something other than an educational component, so?
Yeah, and the intent of that, I see your point, and these conditions were, are being proposed, and we're open to any input the board wants to make.
Okay.
The point of that was actually specifically to address what Attorney Leberts was saying, which is to, how do these people filter? And I see how you're looking, that it may appear like we're trying to make a loophole. That's not the intent. It was actually the other way around, to provide assurance that only people that are going to be participating in the program will be allowed to stay at the house.
Okay. I think that's all I have for the time being. I may have others once I review. Oh, you know what I do, sorry, Ken, I'll just hop in quickly. Any fires, I think that there's been concerns about the fire, from the fire department, about the status of the structure. Is there any plan to put a sprinkler system in, or have you conferred with the fire department regarding any things that they would like to see?
I have not conferred with the fire department, but what I would submit to you is that a ruling that they're exempt from zoning does not exempt them from Board of Health, Public Safety, Fire Codes, or those types of things. So they'll have to comply with whatever requirements that are there. And as, as Dr. Von Hirszen did say, there's a very significant commercial-grade fire alarm system, and there are fire extinguishers and other types of apparatus in the facility that Woods Hole put in.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, a couple of questions. Is there any ADA compliance, even on the first floor?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not seeing any, no, there aren't facilities in the home. Or ramps?
Well, there are ramps, and these, these were put in by the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution. And so we have not altered those, so they're in fact in the same condition. So there's a ramp up one side, there's a handicap bathroom, and some of the kitchen facilities on the first floor are also oriented towards handicap people.
Okay, good. I would second the concerns about fire safety. I guess, maybe as part of our decision, if we should approve this, we might add, ask that there be some kind of a fire safety review. Sorry, is that something you can?
Well, I would request that Attorney Wall submit that to the conditions, because this is an appeal, not a special permit.
Right.
And Pat Harris can correct me.
My understanding of Section 3 says that the zoning board can't get into building for issues, but?
This is an appeal.
I think conditions attached to this, if it was.
All right, well, let's hear what Pat says. Actually, I was gonna ask Pat for some.
I would suggest that the board would require a use and occupancy permit that would involve the review of the fire department and the building department prior to issuance of the permit, so they review all the plans and inspect the property.
So basically, what you're saying, Pat, is if the board does overturn the previous decision, they can direct the applicant to receive an occupancy, according to, correct?
Yes, an occupancy permit for exempt use, if that's the determination the board comes to.
Thank you.
And that would be issued by building department and include?
And fire.
And include fire.
Sit closer, Pat.
In cooperation with the fire department. I spoke with the fire department this afternoon, excuse me, and they said that they would review plans with the building department that would precede any occupancy permit.
Okay. And I guess, finally, I'm assuming that, that these conditions that you've submitted would all be part of our.
Findings.
Findings.
Yeah, we are offering those and to be bound by them as part of this decision, and as I said to Attorney Beal, and we're open to any other input from the board.
So, so the one thing that I remember discussing this, going with you all during the mediation, was in condition nine, where you say, the director of climate house should submit an annual report to the zoning board of appeals by January 31, describing the educational activities for the preceding summer season, and then documented by including information about the number of fellows and stipends and so forth. But there's nothing, and I understand the difficulty in, in, by January 31, not being able to say what's coming up, but perhaps we could include some language that would say you would also indicate at least what is planned for the upcoming summer season.
That would, that would be fine, sure. And I can't remember all the discussions we had during those six hours, but I think the issue there was that you wanted some sort of report of actual occurrences.
Right, and I, I understand you might not have all your grants in place, you might not know who the fellows are yet, and so forth, but at least if we could have something, you know, 10 fellows are projected, and we have these grants submitted, or whatever. Something so we, I guess, you know, the fundamental issue here is, is we, we want to ensure that the use is, for the use as described here, and we don't have every other house in town proposing that they're an educational institution.
Right.
Okay, so we might ask for a little bit of amended language on that. All right, let me see if there's any further comments from the public, and I thought, Pat, did you wanna make any additional comments at this time?
I'd like to make a couple of comments, just because I might get further along, and I should probably bring it to your attention now. One of the provisions that relates to this determination of an exemption also says that if the property doesn't comply with the parking or dimension requirements, that after the exemption is granted, if it were by this board, a special permit would be required by the planning board on that secondary issue. It's in 240 dash 2.1 point A. It's the last clause that talks about bulk and parking and coverage, et cetera. And I understand that this is a pre-existing non-compliant structure and probably a substantial lot, but when those conditions exist, and the exemption is provided, the planning board needs to provide a special grant and relief from additional provisions under zoning.
Okay.
You know, and there was one issue that I, I think would be important for the board to consider, is I understand that there's some vagaries about year to year, what would be the number of individuals staying at the structure, but I believe there are five bedrooms identified in the floor plan.
I counted eight.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm correct. I think that the number of beds in the structure might be something you want to consider as a condition. And again, when I spoke with the fire department, because this is a quote, combined use of both educational use, which has certain requirements under the fire prevention rules, there are other code requirements that would apply for lodging. I mean, we're not gonna call it a lodging house if it's an exemption, but the protections for the safety of the occupants have to be addressed, so the number of bedrooms, I think, is important. And then that issue that you just raised, Ken, is, we did speak and talked about perhaps having a submittal in May, talking about prospective scheduling coming up for that summer.
Rather than January?
Rather than January. And I, I think that if there was a combined reporting in May about what happened the preceding year, in fact, and then submitting what is expected for the following summer, might be something that would be more effective for you. You could review what was, had been presented the year before, and what actually happened, and then what they're proposing for the following year.
The only concern I might have is if by some, you know, for some reason, the board, the future board decided, no, we don't wanna grant this now. At that point, they will be very far along in their planning process, and it would be difficult to back off.
Understood. I'm just, you know, trying to go through some of the notes that we took previously when discussing this. And the only, the last thing that I would mention, and I think we should get some clarification on the issue of individuals who stay, and I think I heard the testimony being that there is an individual who's, I suspect a scientist at MBL is what was described, who has stayed at the climate house in the past four years. And how does that dovetail with the requirement that they be part of the program? And I think this was sort of addressed by some of the questions, but not directly. If there, if the program is during the summer, and the remainder of the year is preparation and/or recovery from, as it would be, the program, there's still a few months in the year that wouldn't be caught up in that description, and it might be useful for the board to pursue that. You know, if there's only one person living there and that winter out, you know, period, I wouldn't see that as being a problem, but if there's a lot of other individuals living there, and it has to be, has to fall within that definition of educational use, the dominant and primary purpose. And if 10 out of 52 weeks is the only portion of the year that is educational, you have to sort of explain how the rest of that, rest of the year is used.
Okay. I wonder if they have a response.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Von. Yes, so thank you very much for that question. We like to say, at the Climate Foundation, research and other education. And part of that is, I'm sure that the board will recognize that education, particularly at the graduate student level, is involving independent study, independent research, and really is a mentorship role in many ways. And so in that capacity, Dr. Lipincoff Schwartz, who the attorney may have referred to, has provided a very strong mentorship role with respect to advising the students, helping them with their research, et cetera, over a period of four years. In fact, I believe she wrote a letter that may be in the record regarding her, her perspective on the climate house. And that's just one example. We've had numerous examples from, from, from Genelia Labs, from Caltech, from MIT, and other schools. In addition, to answer the question about the number of weeks per year, research and other education, we may be doing education 10 weeks a year and research, but we're doing research the rest of the year, and that's either happening in spring and fall here in Woods Hole, or in other sites where we've worked in, in previous winters and are planning to actually be working with Australia, with New Zealand, and other countries in Asia that are funding our research. And so in fact, we're doing research year-round, and we like to say, research and other education, and that's very much the spirit in which we operate the climate house.
Okay. All right, let's see if there's anyone else in the public that wants to make any comments about this particular remand of an appeal. Okay, if there isn't, I wonder, so what we really need to do, Suri, correct me if I'm wrong, is basically craft a set of conditions that either we accept the building commissioner's decision, right, on this remand, but we say, subject to the following conditions, we do that. Or, I guess we accept the appeal and say, no, we're not granting this, we're overturning this. Is that correct?
Yes. Kind of the way you put it, yeah.
So, I guess it's, at this point, it's up to the board, you, but what I'm thinking is we, because there's some uncertainty over the exact nature of the text in these decisions, that what we do is direct Suri to finalize a decision based on this remand of whether we sustain the appeal or?
Do you wanna have Attorney Wall revise those conditions, based on your discussion?
Well, I would like him to kinda work with, with you on that. It's what I would like, but it's not just up to me.
Yeah, can we have a, why don't you do some more discussion?
So we have a discussion of whether the tendency is to approve with revised fact, as opposed to deny.
There you go. That's a good idea, Terry. So, what's your?
I'm not voting on that.
You can still express an opinion.
I think would be to write a positive decision, a draft decision, subject to the attorney's review and the board's review, and come back at the next earliest meeting.
So basically, I guess denying appeal is what we're really doing, right? We're saying?
You're overturning your previous decision.
Right. TJ?
If the board remembers I was the sole, the center.
To begin with?
To begin with. That having been said, I do have more of a local interpretation of the door requirement than the rest of the board does. I'd be in favor of, you know, the applicant did, or the appellant did work a lot with these conditions, and I think we're there in terms of proving primary and dominant use of the property as exempted use, being education. So I'd be in favor of tweaking these conditions and voting in favor of it.
Kim?
I will take, I suppose, somewhat the opposite position of TJ, which may or may not be surprising on this, this issue, because I think I did pretty strongly last time as well. I'm concerned, I remain concerned with this notion, it just seems so fuzzy, this, it's a six-to-10-week program. There's some people staying there who mentorship role, and I have that written down, I think, three times. And when Attorney Harris said, you know, I, there's individuals saying, how does that dovetail with the program? The response was, again, there's a mentorship role. And to me, it's, I went to law school because I lived with people who happened to practice law, doesn't mean that they're my mentors. So, I'm concerned about that. And I think, what I wanted to see out of this remand was some, I mean, there's conditions, but those conditions are fuzzy, and maybe that's the nature of this use. But it's certainly not as specific as I think it could be, or it should be, for, for them to be exempted from zoning for an educational purpose. There's still just a lot of fuzziness for me. And so I think I'm going to, I wanna sit down, I wanna look at the case law again, I wanna look at what use these conditions will provide, and I think if, I could get there if the conditions are strong enough. But as represented at the hearing, right now, in the presentation, it's still basically what we were saying two years ago, or a year ago, whenever it was, that there's this mentorship and community. I actually was sitting here thinking, I remember when? and community. I actually was sitting here thinking, I remember when there was this reference to community of scholars, and Attorney Leopards was kind of all over that, and then they used that language again in this presentation. And so I'm just concerned about that. I think we need to see, or stronger conditions, probably, from my perspective anyways.
I haven't seen the new conditions. I had the one-page ones from back in June.
They're not in the file. I don't remember seeing them in the file.
No, the ones I have is the one-page ones from back in June.
Right.
When we had the mediation.
Well, if you want to look those over, and I can come back to you and see if Paul has any thoughts.
Well, I think we need to take the time to go through these, and also I'm concerned about the public safety.
You want to just continue this?
Yeah, I think we should.
Rather than direct Ree to do anything?
I think we need to continue it and get some more input, and I think, concerned about the public safety, I think we need to get the fire department involved. Should the sprinkler system be installed in that building? I'm really concerned about that.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to entertain a motion to continue from someone.
Well, I want to, before we get into that, and I don't know if I'm, the, I just want to, I had written down here, I think it would be helpful if, I guess it's not the applicant or, you know, the Climate Foundation were to confer with the fire department, rather than us just including, you know, the occupancy, as Attorney Harris, I think, was a good recommendation in terms of including that as a condition. But it would certainly be helpful and informative if we had that information prior to making a decision.
I agree.
I think you need more of a breakdown, too, on what's happening there the rest of the year, because we're getting answers that we may be doing education, we may be in other areas. And if you're looking for that as a dominant use, don't we have to look at the whole yearly? And then how enforceable is if they get the exemption, these conditions, if they don't submit to the town, but they already have the exemption?
The one really clear statement in there is that no one who is not associated with this educational mission is, can stay there.
But then you have, it's easy to say, but once they get the exemption, is that enforceable if they don't submit to the town?
Not easily.
That's, I mean, I guess that's sort of getting at, is it...
In the file, I will, you know, I got to give them some credit, there's a lot of documentation that demonstrates that there are people there who've got fellowships, they competed for these stipends and so forth and so on. So, I, you know, not just any old person can achieve, can meet that standard, you know. They definitely, I believe, demonstrated that this is what's going on, and they've admitted the Airbnb approach was, you know, erroneous, and they won't do it again. So...
May I, through the chair, just address something that Attorney Beal brought up, and it's still beyond discussed. I want to try to augment what we said. The six-week, what we're trying to do is convince you of an educational use with kind of a critical mass, a quantum of education use. There's different things going on. The six to 10 week program is kind of a core. One of the things Attorney Leopert said is, you know, where's the classroom, where's the syllabus? So, that was actually going on back then. But Dr. Von Herson is a, I'm a lawyer, I have a liberal arts background, he's science. I have to digest and process what he tells me. We might not have been able to articulate that well the last time it was occurring. It's still occurring, and that's kind of the base. But the other thing that's really, really important to understand is that this graduate and postdoctoral research that's going on, as Dr. Von Herson said, is very different than my high school or college student, you know, with their books and their lectures. This is occurring very independently, and that is occurring all summer long. The fellows come for approximately 10 weeks, and they are doing their research. And one of the things that we talked about at the mediation was to have a product at the end of that, something to point to, tangible, that said that the fellows did this, and they either developed a paper, or a video, or a PowerPoint presentation. And one of the conditions that we proposed at the request of the people that came to the mediation was to publish that and make that available for everyone in Woods Hole and put it on the website. It's much more than a six-week program, is what I'm trying to get at. And if we can demonstrate that further, we're happy to do that and break it down. We're also happy to work on these conditions further. And I did execute a waiver of the time constraints, and we'll do that again as necessary to persuade the board.
Okay, so I think we've been going about an hour. I think if we, it sounds to me like we're not quite there. Maybe we're moving in that direction, but we're not quite there, and we want to continue.
And allow Attorney Wall to readdress some of those conditions?
Yeah.
Run them by Pat? Would that be okay? Before you hand it in to the board?
If someone would like to make a motion to continue?
I'll make the motion to continue.
To, Ree, what date?
Christmas Eve?
Eve.
Jeez. I'd like to, why don't we do January 11th, because we don't know if that one's going to go forward for sure. And there at the end of both of those. How about January 11th? Would that give you enough time, Attorney Wall?
I believe that it would. And before there's a vote taken, though, can I just appoint a, I guess, information in order? Dr. Von Herson travels extensively and is going to be, as he said, in Asia and Australia. He's not going to be able to be at that next hearing. I think we can manage...
At this point, I don't know that we, you know, I think we understand...
Yep.
No offense, we don't need you.
The mission.
We understand the mission and the science and all that as part of it. We're just working on refining a little bit the conditions.
And I think I can do that. I can still contact Dr. Von Herson by email and telephone, and I can work with Attorney Harris. What I was going to say was, if anybody has a question for him, now would be a great time to ask it.
Kimberly, do you have any other?
Okay. This is through the board, obviously. Following up on your thoughts about having the fire department give you a report, I think you should request from Mr. Von Herson that he provide access to the fire department, so they can go in and inspect the property and give a report to you, and somebody from the building department as well.
But they do have somebody on the premises living there, do they not? Yes. So...
So, if you want to address that concern of that, please come forward.
Well, we're certainly happy to accommodate any required inspections. There's no problem with that whatsoever. The house doesn't have substantial wall insulation, so the heating bill runs thousands of dollars per month in the winter, and so the house is shut down effectively as of December, and then it's...
That answers one of the questions of the board, which is what happens the rest of the year?
Well, exactly. You know, in spring and fall, we're doing research there six to nine months of the year, and the house is shut down in the winter because we can't afford $5,000 to $10,000 in heating bills.
That would be a good thing to add to your narrative in the conditions.
Do you actually turn off the heat and drain the pipes and do all that stuff?
We do winterize it. We keep the house at around 45 degrees to keep it from freezing. And would you drain the pipes?
But is it convenient at this point in time? Is there anybody there that can allow the fire department access?
Over the next week, I would say yes, but then with the holiday season quickly approaching, that would become more difficult.
Okay. Well, I did hear from the fire department today, and they do have a concern, so I think they'd make it, make themselves available for the next week. I would definitely call them tomorrow if I were one of you.
Well, I'll be happy to contact the fire department and discuss it with them. Thank you.
So that clears up one issue.
Okay, so we're, I think we're in the, we have half of a motion. I don't know if I heard a second.
So it, well, I...
To continue.
January 11th, is that amenable to both attorneys?
Yes.
I understand Dr. Von Herson won't be available.
Okay. So Ed makes that motion, that we continue to this discussion?
Do you want to do it at 6:30, or do you want to do it at 5:30?
I want to do it at 6:30.
I don't know if I'm available on the 11th, for what it's worth. I mean, we have...
I do have that written down. I apologize.
So I think we could still do it that day.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think you could still do it that day. I may be available. So I think you could still do it and have others participate.
Okay, well, that's up to...
Okay, so...
So who made the motion?
We have Ed with the motion, now him and her second.
Who'll second?
TJ seconds.
That was January 11th at 6:30.
January 11th, 6:30 here in town hall. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll see you then.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, so our next hearing is a special permit, 087-1767 Hidden Village Road in West Falmouth, to construct a two-story addition to an existing dwelling. Kim?
Still.
Still collecting?
Still collecting, I have one second.
She keeps me being slow.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Molly Wilson of Falmouth, Massachusetts, applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-3C to construct a two-story addition, creating habitable space within the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on septic property known as 67 Hidden Village Road, West Falmouth. And for referrals, from engineering, standard comment, and then just also notes, please clearly post house number. Out at the road, since the house sits far from the road edge, we recommend adding dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater measure for the roof. Commcom had no comment. Assessors had, not applicable. Fire department had no comment, and planning had no comment. I did see that there was some correspondence from Molly Wilson stating that the height of the existing structure is 22 feet 6 inches.
Hi, I'm Molly Wilson. Thank you for your time. I actually came for you about two years ago, I believe August of 2015, to ask for a special permit regarding plans that were similar to this, which were approved. And after that, before I went forward with a plan review with the building department, well, I guess two things happened. One of them was that I reconsidered certain design elements and went back to the drawing board, so to speak. And the second was that my husband and I had an opportunity that we had been working towards for a long time to start our own business. And so we opened a restaurant in Woods Hole in the spring of 2016, and that has taken all of my attention between then and now. So here we are, two years later, and I'm asking you for a special permit for a similar addition. I guess, to summarize the situation, we own a home in West Falmouth on a private road. It's a dirt road, and the dirt road as it exists is in a bit of a different location from where it is drawn on the map. So, you know, technically, we are, our current, our current home, our front stoop is 7 feet 2 inches from the front property line. In actuality, the road where it exists is over 40 feet from that point. So, I am asking for a special permit to put an addition on closer than, I believe, it's the 25 feet required from the front property line. My revised plans actually, the first set of plans asked to continue with that front wall being the same distance as it was from the property line, and the revised set of plans actually moved it back quite a bit. So the closest point of the proposed new structure would be 13 feet 5 inches from the property line, and that would be a porch. And so then the actual, the wall would sit 8 feet back from that, at 21 feet 5 inches. I think that pretty much covers it on my end. Let me know if you have any questions or anything that you missed.
Okay, let's see if anybody has a question for it. Maybe I'll start at that end. Robert?
Actually, just on the road, I'm just a little confused on the road. So, the road itself looks like it's on other lots?
Let me, I have a picture that might help. And I mean, you can see it on the site plan as well.
Yeah, I guess my only question is, the lots where the road, where the road actually exists, are those privately owned lots from someone else, or?
Yeah, it's their name on it.
Yes.
You can see their name on them, huh?
Yeah.
But you still have the right to use the road on their land, correct?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's a...
If you want to submit a picture.
So I just traced the black line in there that traces the ribbon as it's up right now to show you all if you want to go by where the actual property line is. So that would be the line on the right, and then the line on the left is, I can see the rub itself.
Yeah, I guess that's it.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
No.
That's still revealing. So it's two bedrooms currently?
Yeah.
And it will be three? Okay. And you have a septic system upgrade, is that...
We do, yeah. When we purchased the house, it was replaced prior to the sale, and we made sure at that time that it was three-bedroom capacity.
Okay. And I see, so the garage, you, you'll be, is it, is there a garage access in the basement? Is there something, is that just double?
Yeah, well, one is for a drive, not a garage per se, but just a larger doors to put in, you know, a small boat or a kayak or a boat trailer or something like that.
Okay. So will the garage be, excuse me, garage, will the basement be finished?
No.
And what's the height of the proposed structure?
I'm going to have to check the plans for that. It is a full two-story structure.
There's an email in the file that says what the...
Oh, I read the...
32 feet in height.
Okay.
From your east elevation.
It's on A4.
Thanks.
Okay, that's all I have.
From the east. TJ?
Oops, sorry. To address engineering's referral, are you proposing any dry wells for...
Yeah, I don't know that they're in this plan, but I have consulted with someone. I mean, the low point of the property is in the backyard, and it's a puggle right now. So, we definitely plan to take, you know, some of the earth that's removed when the foundation is built and bring some, you know, change some of the grading. And I have consulted someone who will help me with that, who has proposed, and like I said, I don't think it's in these plans, a well along the, or close to the entrance of that lower entrance to basement, because if we didn't do it, the basement would likely fill with water. There's quite a steep slope, if you see on the, I guess, the west side of the property.
Thank you.
Anything, Jerry?
No, I just noticed the note that we're using this plan as opposed to 2015 plan.
Okay, so just for the record, you're here because there's this front yard nonconformity too close to the road.
Right.
And it's currently 7 feet, and you are 7.2 feet, I guess.
7 feet 2 inches, I believe.
Yeah. And you're, you're not making that any worse.
No, no.
Okay. Let's see if there's anyone here that has anything to say about this project. I think the board has asked their questions. Ree, anything?
No.
Anyone in the public? Okay, if the board have enough information?
I'll move to close. I'll move to close.
Second.
Okay, Kim at the close, all in favor?
Aye.
And I, okay. And what's the pleasure of the board?
The findings and the conditions ought to be the same as they were two years ago, basically.
Well, I think the project's slightly different.
Slightly different, but basically, just a couple of numbers.
So I will, I'll move to approve application 8717.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
TJ, be it. So Kim and TJ, and then findings.
Okay, so findings. So it's currently two bedrooms, increasing to three bedrooms, but septic system capacity for three bedrooms. for three bedrooms. Hmm, the only nonconformity is the setback nonconformity, and we're proposed, the proposed new addition will be stepped in from that.
Affirmative, amenable to dry wells?
Yes, amenable to dry wells. Changes, yeah, I guess I have that written down, changes to grading. I think that we should have a finding just regarding the fact that the road is not constructed where it is shown on paper, for what it's worth.
So testimony she reviewed?
Yes.
Applicant reviewed location of the private road?
Such, such that the front yards, or the setback from the street, let's say setback from the street appears larger. And if you want to use a different word than setback, we could do that.
Maybe what you want to say is the constructed way, rather than the layout.
Yeah.
But since it's a private road, that's kind of-
It's out of your purview.
Right.
But we'll make a finding that she did discuss that.
Yeah, I had one, I used to pose a question about, we can talk about right now, which no one else may be bothered by this, but I think on the plans, it shows a proposed eight-foot gravel drive, and it shows it on the lot, and also shows it over the private way. So I'm just concerned about approving a plan showing a proposed, I want it to be clear that we're not taking a position relative to construction on the private way.
Then you'd also have to mention the same thing with the concrete walk on the other side.
Yeah.
Well, it is, yeah, it's the way, just, I would just make a finding that the gravel drive shown on the plan crosses the private road, and that's-
Crosses the paper.
Yeah, beyond, or, or whatever you want.
Right.
Yeah, something just-
Yeah, to let the record show that the board is aware of that.
Right, yes, please.
Because the owners certainly might have rights to do that.
I would think that they'd have certain rights within Falmouth.
And I don't know if there's an association that not that would take care of that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Just give me a minute.
Sure.
You okay? Thank you.
And then, what else do we need for this?
Conditions.
Two forty dash, what are the findings? Is it?
Two forty dash three C, not more detrimental.
And two forty dash two sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
Conditions would be per plan?
Do you have to submit revised plans for the dry wells?
No, I think, like you've done before, you can make a finding that she's amenable, which you guys did.
We see it.
And, and there it should, the condition could be, according to the project engineer, she said she's working with somebody.
Yes, yes.
That's what we've done previously.
Yes. And that's for the condition. And then?
Three bedrooms?
Three bedrooms, oh, yeah.
And you want to include something about the dry wells, or did you?
I think Suri did.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Satisfied with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're approved. Good luck on the project. Everyone can eat at Water Street Kitchen. Want to take a break?
I do, yeah.
All right, short recess.
Meeting back to order. Next hearing is Warner Trustee. This is 09-2-17, 18 Woodruff Lane. A modification of an existing special permit to allow accessory apartment within a barn structure. Kim?
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that I don't have any sense of how to pronounce that. How do you pronounce that first name? Ray? Ray? Ranny? Ranny? Ranny?
Ray.
Ray. What's her name?
Maybe it's Randy.
Randy?
In any event, it's a nice say and I just can't pronounce it. P. Warner, trustee of New York, New York, applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a modification of existing special permits pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-23I of the Code of Falmouth to allow an accessory apartment on the upper level of the detached accessory structure on subject property known as 18 Woodruff Lane with whole Massachusetts. For referrals, for engineering, this application was reviewed only for impacts to public rights ways and public utilities. Woodruff Lane is a private right-of-way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Concom had no comment. Historical Commission. Structure is considered historic based on the date of construction and does contribute to the character of the Quissette Historic District. However, since there is no intention to alter the exterior look of the detached accessory building, the Historical Commission supports the homeowner's petition to convert the second floor into an accessory building. Assessors, there's a note includes 1F and parcel 8C. Water. Applicant shall provide a plan to the water department showing how water will be provided to the detached structure, how metered, standard plans and specs are posted on Water's webpage. It says 2-1B Paragraph 3, quote, "Each dwelling unit or building requires a separate water service from the main," end quote. Just a CC. More in service number 18021. There's also an aerial photograph, I believe, from the water department. Fire Department, no comment. Planning. Applicant has not filed with planning board as of this date. And we have one letter with comments and concerns, two letters of support, one letter with no objection, and one letter in opposition.
Okay, and here for the applicant is Mr. Attorney Ahmed.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman, members of the board. As you know, I'm Bob Ahmed, Dona Falmouth attorney, and I represent the applicant. So, this concerns a proposed accessory apartment. In the application, we described it as 600 square feet. In a subsequent plan, it's been reduced to a one-bedroom accessory apartment with 462 square feet in it. And it's located at 18 Woodruff Lane off of Quissette Avenue. The photo that is on the screen in front of you shows is one view of the building in which the apartment would be located. The driveway in the lower-left is the private driveway that actually leads to the main house on the property. The lot contains 1.29 acres. Now, the accessory structure is a large accessory structure. The upper level, a portion of which would be the accessory apartment, contains 1,600 square feet. The building measures 40 by 40. And below that level is garage, boat storage, and workshop area. So it's actually a good-sized structure, and it's 25 feet high. The building was permitted by special permit in 1992. The height was adjusted pursuant to a modification of the special permit a couple of years later and built in accordance with that plan. And then there's more history of this building with the Board of Appeals in that the conditions did not allow habitation of the structure after the occupancy permit was issued in the summer of 2000, sorry, of 1995. The Warners had some Commodore baseball players stay in the barn. There was a complaint about that. The Warners, in good faith, appealed the building commissioner's direction that there not be any overnight staying in the barn. The Board of Appeals held hearings on that appeal and on a special permit application to modify the special permit to allow sleeping. There never was a kitchen. We didn't feel it was a dwelling unit, but there was a bathroom. The Board of Appeals determined that overnight sleeping would not be allowed. That was in 1996. And since that time, there hasn't been overnight sleeping in the barn according to the Warners. So, this is a fairly large lot. It's a very hidden location. Actually, the house is called Hidden House by the Warners in their front. We have a permitted large accessory structure. At the time it was built, an accessory apartment in a detached structure was not allowed. It is now allowed based on the 2017 amendments to the zoning bylaw. And we're here to request that this small, one-bedroom apartment can be allowed in the structure. When one goes through the criteria for an accessory apartment, we meet them all. It should be one accessory apartment on the lot. When I say we meet them, I say we meet them or will meet them because there are requirements that have to do with future compliance. That is, owner occupancy of either the principal dwelling or the smaller unit for seven months of the year. And then there are provisions about the rental of the apartment. But these are all prospective. These are the obligations that go along with getting the permission. The apartment could be used for a caretaker, especially important in this hidden location. Could be used for rental for periods of at least six months. That's the requirement. It could simply be used for family. This accessory apartment meets the size limit, which is 800 square feet, not more than two bedrooms. This property is not subject to the Costa Pond Overlay District, so there is not a limit on the number of bedrooms allowed. We have an existing septic system for the house that was installed in 2009. It is a modern system. We submitted to you a copy of the Title V inspection report. It passed inspection. The design is for six bedrooms. There are only, there's only a requirement for five bedrooms for a house that has 10 or 11 rooms in it. But this is six bedrooms by design. That is the septic system. And there's an entirely separate septic system, which was installed for the barn when it was constructed in the 90s. And that also passed inspection this summer and is sized so that it actually would be sufficient for a three-bedroom house. We're proposing one bedroom in that structure. Certainly, the architectural design is compatible with the neighborhood. It's the architectural design that exists today, since we aren't proposing exterior changes. We did submit a plan to the planning board with a copy, I think got to the Board of Appeals, that proposed a deck off the rear of the barn for the access. That's been revised so that it's all interior access through a set of stairways down to an existing door. So there really will be no change to the exterior of the structure for this project. Now, given the encouragement of accessory apartments by town meeting, I think you've got enough information that normally you would be able to grant this permit. However, I want to address, and I think it's helpful to amplify some of these points if I do so, the letter that you received just today from Attorney Matthew Lynch, who is here representing an abutter. His client owns 32 acres, abutting the Warner property to the rear. And he makes no argument, Attorney Lynch makes no argument, as to how the accessory apartment in an existing structure compliant with the setback requirement will actually impact his client's property. And I think any claim of adverse impact would be speculative. He claims that there is dimensional non-compliance with the structures on the property that require variance. And regardless of whether his argument might be correct under state law, and I don't agree he is correct, his conclusion is dead wrong. He seems unaware of Falmouth Zoning Bylaw Section 243B, which says that a non-complying structure, even a structure which would require a variance, is deemed legally non-conforming after 10 years. And both the house and the deck and the sheds next to the house and the barn are more than 10 years old. They are shown in their present configuration, including sheds, including the deck, on the plan dated October 26, 2005, that was filed with the town for the septic upgrade. I'm not sure you have a copy of that plan. It's on the back of this, and I'll give it to you. Attorney Lynch claims that the Falmouth Commodores baseball player stayed in the barn in the summer of 2005. That's simply untrue. It may be a mistake. Perhaps he meant 1995. The only year in which Commodore baseball player stayed with the Warners was in 1995, when Ray Warner was on the Commodores Board. His generosity for that housing was what led to complaints about use of the barn and decisions issued by the Board of Appeals in 2006 that I referred to. And maybe some of those Commodores were rowdy. And the Warners have confirmed to me that since then, since the board instructed that there be no overnight sleeping, they've been in compliance. So there's been a misstatement of the history, and perhaps it's just a confusion. Attorney Lynch claims that the proposed apartment, now reduced to 462 square feet, exceeds 800 square feet because it's within a larger structure through which emergency egress has been proposed. But the accessory apartment bylaw clearly contemplates that an apartment may be within a larger detached structure. 240-23I-4B reads, "The architectural effect as the result of the accessory apartment being constructed within an accessory structure shall be that of a garage or barn, customarily incidental to a single-family residence." And 240-32I-5B says, "An accessory apartment constructed within or as a detached accessory structure." In other words, it could be its own structure, it could be part of a larger structure. The 462-square-foot apartment by itself meets the bylaw definition of dwelling units. It's a suite of rooms used by an individual or one family for living, sleeping, cooking, and eating. That's what makes it a dwelling unit. There's nothing in the bylaw or in common sense that says an apartment's emergency access couldn't be through common space, which might be a common hallway, a garage, or other space. There's no reason a resident cannot have access, if the owner allows, to a common laundry or storage area or recreation area. We could probably eliminate the emergency egress through the rest of the structure, that is, at least through the upstairs. Utilize the existing stairs that go down into the garage, as well as the primary egress from the new stairway down to an existing door. I've sketched how that could be done. I simply think it's unnecessary and at a strict expense. But the idea of having an apartment that has access through the rest of the structure, there shouldn't be any problem, particularly the emergency access. The Warners have a legal accessory structure, 1,600 square feet, as I've said, on the second floor. The building's extremely attractive. It's also very private. They're trying to sell the property, including this unusual large accessory structure. An accessory apartment can help with safety and security issues, provide a purpose for some of the significant space. The accessory apartment might be used, as I said, by family or rented or a caretaker. Now, obtaining a special permit for a prospective use and a prospective owner is entirely reasonable. People often are doing things that don't yet exist. They want to know if they can do it. They're seeking permission to do it. The history of the property or the history of a particular owner is not that relevant. We're trying to get permission to have this accessory apartment so that a buyer knows what they can do with the property and do what the town is encouraging, that is, the creation of accessory apartments. So granting a special apartment would be accessory. An accessory apartment would be consistent, not only with the new bylaw, but with the purposes of zoning set forth in Section 241 of the zoning bylaw, which includes encouraging housing for persons of all income levels and conserving the value of land and buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land. Note that Attorney Lynch says in his letter that enhancing property values is clearly not a goal of the bylaw. But that's not so, as the purpose is the bylaw include enhancing property values. That's for me. Tell him I'm busy. So Attorney Lynch referred to the bylaw as encouraging apartments for people aging in place. He omitted the language in the same clause referring to encouraging greater diversity of population with particular attention to young adult citizens. We obtain zoning decisions for property, not for particular individuals and rights under a special permit passed with the property. We don't assume that future owners will not comply with the conditions of the bylaw. We don't withhold special permits because neighbors, for whatever reason, have not always gotten along. Attorney Lynch refers to the Warners as having a history of violating the 1962 special permit. And I've already given the history of that and the fact that they applied for a modification that was denied, and they've been in compliance ever since for more than 20 years. The application is supported by letters you've received from Bernstein, Hattabau, and Mather, with whom the Warners have gotten along very well. Attorney Lynch claims incorrectly that the Costa Pond Overlay District applies to this application. It does not. Costa Pond Overlay District expressly applies to subdivisions of more than five lots or five acres within a certain distance of named water bodies. It applies to commercial developments requiring site plan review. UNFV applies to certain elderly housing. If the Warner property were part of a six-lot subdivision, then Costa Pond Overlay District would apply, but it is not. As I said, that we have passing inspection reports with plenty of capacity for the number of bedrooms on the property. Attorney Lynch claims that nothing has changed since 1992, when an apartment was not allowed. Well, the fact is that the need for apartments such as proposed has become more apparent and recognized by town meeting, and the zoning bylaw has been changed, allowing us to make this request. There certainly have been changes since 1992. The building department plans for the barn in the 1990s showed the water service to the barn. Existing water service was installed and also shown on the 2005 plan submitted to the town for the septic system upgrade completed in 2009. The building commissioner issued a letter in 2006 confirming that the bathroom already installed was legal. So the issue of how water will be provided to the accessory structure is a complete red herring. I don't believe any permit will be required from the water department at all. And the existing water service complied with water department standards in effect when the barn was built. The water department subsequently adopted regulations requiring separately metered water service to each structure. But the Warner barn is grandfathered. The water department's purpose in requiring separate meters is so it can shut off one of the accounts if it isn't paid without shutting off the other. As I said, either of the units can be rented. And landlord is required by Massachusetts law to pay for tenants' water. This goes again back to the fact that we shouldn't be assuming that people are going to violate the laws. The water department always has a priority lead on real estate for water bills anyway. They will get paid. Okay, so they adopted a regulation which requires a separate service. But we, our grandfather, we predate that. We don't require a permit from the water department for this project. And the Board of Appeals should not impose a requirement that we do that. In any case, the original requirement of the water department was that there be a separate service from the street, from Quissette Avenue, extraordinarily expensive requirement for affordable, you know, for housing that we're trying to develop. Mr. Rafferty, the water superintendent, subsequently said, "Well, you could separate it at the house." So we could bring a new water line around the house from one opposite side all the way around the house, under the driveway to the structure. We shouldn't be required to do that. It would cost thousands of dollars. It's simply is unnecessary.
Just to hang on, that you've got about a minute left.
That's just about what I need. Thank you. In this case, and its impact on neighbors, whether the accessory apartment is in a detached structure or if it were in addition to the house, the impacts on neighbors would be the same. And the accessory apartment attached to the house or within the house would not even require a special permit. We'd simply go for site plan review, which we've done. We haven't received a decision that should be issued next Tuesday night from the planning. The water department would not be suggesting separate water service for each of the apartments or each of the dwelling units if it was in the same structure. So the argument that's this, so that we can shut off water to one unit, but not the other, really doesn't hold water. The location of this proposed detached, no pun intended, the location of a proposed detached structure, in this case, its design and appearance, in other cases, might make a difference. And that's what you're really supposed to be reviewing. Doesn't make a difference in this case. We're not building a new structure. We're not changing the appearance on the lot. We have a building that can be used for recreation purposes and have visitors to it. This is a handsome building, already reviewed by the Board of Appeals back in 1992 and in 1996. It exists, and this is a very good use for it, which is what town meetings try to encourage. Thank you very much.
Let's see if there's any questions from the board. Robert?
The recreational space that they're showing in there with the door access to it in order to get to the second means of egress, how are you handling that emergency exit? And what is that recreational space for owner going to be used for?
Okay. Well, exactly how the emergency egress would be constructed may depend in part on what the building commissioner requires. He may feel that since it can be locked by the tenant, whether it's accessible from the recreation space is irrelevant. I don't know the answer to that. It could be designed so that you can open it from the inside of the apartment, but you can't open it, unless it's already open, of course, from the other side. Truly an emergency egress. We're just trying to comply with the building code if that's required. Another possibility, I suppose, would be to have the kind of window on the rear off the bedroom at the back of the apartment that can be used with a ladder down that's not very far to the grass below. So I'm sure there's a solution to have an emergency egress. As I also mentioned, if we really had to, it wouldn't be very difficult to just enlarge the bathroom a little bit. That might be even a good result so that there can be a door right to the landing at the top of the stairs, go down to the basement, and there could be no access to the recreation area unless you went outside and came back in. But as I said, accessory apartments, which can be isolated from the rest of the property, that the tenant has dominion over, they're allowed within an existing building. And that's what we're showing here. But just for your record, I'll show you what the sketch I made that would show no access whatsoever from the apartment to the recreation area that's shown. Now, what will it be used for? Then they're somewhat reduced in size with the apartment. It could be used for any number of things that an owner might want to have, that is, an owner in the, of the large house. I can tell you that in years past, it's been quite a number of years now, my wife and I went to square dances in that recreation space. And there's been a history of that type of use of the property. So I don't have a full answer, but it's a nice bit of space for somebody to do something. It's got a high ceiling. Maybe one could actually have one of those machines where you practice your golf swing.
That's all I have. I don't have any questions.
No questions.
Kim?
Yeah, I just have one question. I guess if you could just elaborate on the planning board's review. I know you said site plan status to be issued, or site plan to be issued by next Tuesday. That's what's expected, but have...
Sure. Well, the planning board seemed to have concern at its first meeting about this issue of access from the apartment into the recreation area, suggesting, is this really an 800 or 600 or, as it now turns out, 462-square-foot apartment? In response to that concern, because we had all of the exits, two exits from the recreation area into the apartment, we revised the plan first to show an entrance off of a deck to be constructed in the back. That's no longer on the table because the Warners and Ray Warner, Randy's husband is an architect, she's a designer. They came up with, which is really a lovely plan, I think, with the interior stairwell down to the existing door. The advantage of that is it puts the entrance right next to where people would park. Makes perfect sense. And now we're just talking about whether there would be a door through the recreation area or we somehow have to not even have the emergency door. And I really don't think the board needs to get, make that decision. In any case, the case was continued, although a planning board had sent me a draft decision, no, completely favorable. When we submitted a subsequent plan, the town planner wanted to write a new decision. I assume he's going to reference that. I don't want to jinx anything, but I expect that the planning board is quite satisfied. There were no other concerns expressed by the board. And I recall that a couple of members thought they could vote. But it got continued until next Tuesday, unfortunately. I believe that this board could close this hearing, if you're ready to do that tonight, after you hear all of the testimony, except for you're considering the planning board's site plan review decision.
Second question is just with regard to this 15-foot right-of-way it's shown us. Does that continue off the property?
Yes, it does. The 32 acres I referred to earlier, I believe, has the benefit of that. Some doubt on that was suggested to me that it was for a specific house, but I believe that it probably is a 15-foot way. It's not wide enough to build a road, but it could be an emergency egress from some subdivision that might be developed on those 32 acres in the future. I don't know what the plan is for that property.
All right, that's all I have for the time being. Thank you.
Okay, do you?
My questions had to do with the egresses, and that's already been addressed.
Anything?
This plan says six bedrooms. The sketch shows seven bedrooms. And does this require enhanced nitrogen, or not? For the septic tank or the accessory?
No, it does not. First of all, under Title V, once you reach eight rooms in a house, you don't count bedrooms anymore. You count the total number of rooms in the house. And that's because Title V recognizes that in larger houses, there are rooms used as dens and music rooms and libraries and any number of things that could be used as a bedroom, but are not. So the definition of bedrooms or for determining the requirements of a septic system, under Title V, were that when the house has more than eight or more rooms, you count the rooms, you divide in two, and you round down. So a nine-room house requires a four-bedroom system. An 11-room house requires a five-bedroom system. You can have a 13-room house with a six-bedroom system. We've installed, or the Warners did in 2009, a six-bedroom system for that house. It exceeds the requirements under Title V. And because the smallest septic system that's usually allowed to be installed is with a 1,000-gallon tanker, was, and that's what was installed outside the barn, that's suitable today for three bedrooms. Now, so we actually have septic on the site. That would be suitable for, well, 11 rooms in one house. in one house and three bedrooms in the second house. So, in terms of Title V compliance, there's, it's all satisfactory, permitted, and recently inspected. And you have in your file the Title V inspection reports. I'm going to give you the 2005 plan that was, shows that proposed septic system for the main house. It also shows the location of the existing septic system for the accessory structure. Now, if the Coastal Pond Overlay District applied, be an argument that you need a United Defense System. I've already told you why it doesn't apply.
Well, another follow-up question. I know, traditionally, from both perspectives, if this was approved with a condition that's an accessory apartment, what would happen if the new owner doesn't keep it as an accessory property, but just as a bedroom? Either opinion?
Okay.
Well, if one doesn't use a special permit within three years of its issuance, it used to be two, as you know, now it's three years, then arguably, the special permit would lapse.
So, if they is it issued, subsequently, they don't use it as an accessory apartment?
Well, once again, if they didn't use it for a period of three years, I think it would still be three years, I use, you know, as opposed to two. You can lose a special permit if you don't use it. Often, once you've exercised rights under a special permit and you don't use some aspect of it, you wouldn't lose it because you're still doing something else. But this is a case, this special permit, I think, is pretty specific to do this accessory apartment within the existing structure. Now, if they, when you say if they did something else with it, they're not allowed to do stuff that's not lawful, that they could, that they could use it for storage, for sure.
Use just one bedroom for the main house?
Well, I would say if they used the bedroom, because that was allowed, you're saying, what if they used the bedroom and the bathroom, but they really didn't do any cooking? My guess is they'd probably do some cooking there over the period of the two or three years and then...
Will you make that as an exception?
Yeah.
I have a follow-up off of that, attorney. I meant just, is there a plan right now with the current owners, I understand the property is for sale, to actually construct the apartment as shown?
I think they probably wouldn't construct it unless it was a condition of their sales agreement, which it could be.
Thank you.
Here's the 2005...
So, the question, do the Warners currently live there year-round, or?
No, they don't live there year-round.
What is their...
They live in New York City. They're...
How much time do they spend there?
Well, I think it has varied from year to year over the years. I'm not sure of the answer. They are not planning to spend more time there or much time. They may sell the property before next summer, and so it'll be a new owner.
So, what are the requirements under the bylaws that the principal residence be owner-occupied for seven and a half months?
Correct. Seven, no, it's not seven and a half.
Seven months.
Yeah.
Is there, would you contemplate in the purchase and sales agreement, a requirement that the purchaser live there for seven months?
I think that this special permit decision will make references to those requirements or to the bylaw, and that the buyer is certainly going to be aware of it. If it was a condition of the Board of Appeals, which I just don't think there's any need to, or it's appropriate, to require that a copy of the decision be attached to any purchase and sale agreement, we, of course, would do that, but you don't do that.
Well, I mean, what assurance do we have that, you know, you don't go ahead and build this, enhancing the value of the property, and then someone acquires this property with the intent of living there in the summer and uses the apartment?
Well, we're going to record the decision of the Board of Appeals in order to activate the special permit. We also would have no objection, although I think it's redundant, we'd have no objection to recording a covenant that specified some of these conditions. It'd be on the record at the registered deed, so a buyer, not only would the buyer have actual notice for sure, but have constructive notice and would be obligated to comply. That's the same as if we constructed it, used it for a couple of years, and then sold the property, and the next owner might not comply with the requirements, but you remember...
You may be identifying a flaw in the bylaw, but that's...
Well, it's, you know, you have many provisions in the zoning bylaw that require compliance. And every time you issue a decision, you attach, not every time, but many times, you attach conditions. And you're saying you have to do this, that, or the other thing in connection with this bylaw, and you can't do this, that, and the other thing. If people violate the terms, there are enforcement procedures. In this particular case, the zoning bylaw actually requires annual reporting to the town. And I don't know the exact language that we have here.
To the building department?
Whether it's, whether it's under the pains and penalties of perjury, or whether it's simply an affidavit, but there is required reporting. So, there is mechanism. And if there's a violation, one can issue an enforcement order, one could be fined, and one can lose the benefit of the special permit.
Is the intent of the applicant to build this prior to sale, or simply to show that they have a permit?
I think the latter, but I think that it could be a condition, especially because of the Warner's profession, that is architect and designer, they could do it. But I think that the preferences of a buyer, as to exactly the details, interior details, perhaps, would probably be left for that person. We'd have no objection to a requirement that a copy of any final plans be submitted to the Board of Appeals, and that a copy of the building permit be issued, be submitted to the Board of Appeals. Those could be conditions set forth in the decision. But I do think that the idea that the Warners are going to sell their property should have little to do, nothing to do, really, with your decision-making. Is the property appropriate? Is the building, as it already exists, appropriate? You can't be worried in every case as to whether this is an owner who's going to comply with the bylaw, or whether the next owner, whom you don't know, is going to comply.
Okay. So, under the current situation before sale, is your testimony that the Warners lived there seven months?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
I did say I don't know, but I would also say, one, I don't think so.
I said yes or no.
I can't say yes or no. I'm not sure it's relevant because they...
You can't say yes.
What if they were deciding to retire to here instead of...
I understand, but...
And they wanted to know that they needed to have the apartment there to retire?
I'm just reading the bylaw, and it says, to qualify, you need to have the principal residence occupied seven months.
No, it doesn't say to qualify you need to do that. It says if you are granted a special permit...
It says, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not...
It's all prospective.
...for a period of five months, and the owner occupant maybe hasn't rental, wait, I'm in the wrong, here, somewhere up here.
What section of...
240-23I.
240-23I. 240-23I.
Mr. Foreman, what if we had a vacant piece of property, and somebody said, "I want to build a house, and in that house, I want to have an accessory apartment"?
I think it's problematic.
Oh, no, sir. No, sir.
It's my opinion.
Yeah, but you've got to read, you've got to read the bylaw and think about what the purpose of the bylaw is and what the intent is. To encourage the creation of such housing. We don't have to prove...
It is in situations where there's a, the owner lives there seven months.
We don't have to prove that we complied with something in the past. Now that we're going to have an accessory apartment, maybe because somebody is planning to retire here and wants to come...
I just wanted to know how long they live there.
I can't tell you for sure. I don't think they've lived there seven months and a year.
Is there anything else from the board before we go to the public? Okay. If not, I do believe the app, one of the members of the public has a representative here. Is that correct?
I have a representative.
Yeah. And so, normally, we allow public comment for two minutes. I'm guessing you might want more than that.
I won't take a lot of time. I submitted a letter, so...
Okay.
My name's Matthew Lynch, I'm with Nixon PB100, Summer Street in Boston. I represent the owners of Zero, Wharsetown Avenue, which surrounds the property. I just wanted to address quickly the seven-month thing. No disrespect, but I don't understand why he doesn't know where his client lives. And as we will testify that the neighbors, that they've not lived in this location, at least for seven years, for seven months a year. So, that's unfortunate that that, as an issue, couldn't be addressed with a more straightforward We do oppose the request for modification. I think the history is important here. The original permit that was issued, special permit in 1992, was issued, and it did allow for a building to go above 18, the structure to go above 18 feet. Unfortunately, the board at that time, hopefully nobody's still on the board from back then, did, in a sense, exceeded its authority, because it didn't have the authority to allow it to go above 18 feet. It would require a variance. So, it was built at that time in violation. Admittedly, it is a non-conforming structure now, but it was built at the time in violation. In 1993, when the applicant went for modification, the board, in their decision, quote, acknowledged that he, the applicant, proceeded to construct the building in accordance with plans other than the plans approved by the ZBA. In 1996, again, and at that time, the board denied the application for an even taller building. In 1996, and I apologize to attorney, and then I meant to say summer of 1995, not summer of 2005 in my letter, the board concluded that family and friends of the applicant slept in the upper level of the accessory structure from time to time, and players of the Commodores baseball team slept in the upper level during the summer of 1995. At that time, the applicant came in asking to clarify the condition, and the board concluded that the clear intent of the condition was and still is not to allow overnight sleeping in the accessory structure, and in so concluding, denied the applicant's request to modify the 1992 special permit. So, we have two instances of non-compliance. Each time, they came back to the board, each time, the board said, "No." And that combined with the fact that the barn itself was built in violation of the zoning bylaw at the time. There are a number of considerations for the board, perhaps more than were identified earlier. Our feeling is that, again, they're asking to modify the special permit. This is the third time to request a modification. The first two times, they were denied. In each case, they were denied because the applicant was in violation of the original special permit. That's not the case here. This is something that's to be considered per the application, per the current zoning. The first issue is the 800 or the now 462 square foot apartment. The limit under the bylaw is 800 square feet. The applicant claims that the 462 square feet will be the apartment, the rest of it will be quote-unquote "recreation space." However, the, given that the only occupants of the structure will be the apartment, the occupant of the apartment, and there will be a door that goes directly from the apartment to the quote-unquote "recreation space," I don't think it's a credible argument to say that the apartment is limited to 462 square feet. There, apparently, is going to be a lock on the door, but it hasn't been identified which side of the door the lock is going to be on. So, if the lock is from the inside of the apartment, then obviously, the occupant can use the whole recreation space as free, and nobody's going to stop them. If it's on the outside, then it's not going to be emergency egress, because you can't really get through the door if it's locked on the other side. To your point that you raised about owner-occupied, my client will testify that at least seven years, and she's owned property nearby, and much longer, I suspect, that it has not been owner-occupied for a period of seven months in any calendar year, for at least seven years. The property is being sold, my understanding. And I don't think, and everybody can have their own opinion, but I don't think the intent of the accessory apartment bylaw was to enhance the value of a property so somebody could sell it, have a permit, and allow somebody else to have an income-producing piece of the property. I think that really the intent was, if somebody owns the property and they want to come in and say, "I live here, I live here on a permanent basis, and I would like an apartment." Those are two different things. I think, given the history, I mean, given the necessity under the bylaw that an affidavit be filed, and pretty much, this is a self-enforcing, self-reporting bylaw, given the history of the applicant and the uncertainty of who the new owner will be, because they're not here before us, I don't know if the board can really be comfortable with the notion that this will be, the seven-month requirement will be adhered to, and the other requirements will be adhered to. The Coastal Pond Overlay District, we respectfully disagree. We do believe that is, that the property is subject to the provisions of the Coastal Pond Overlay District, because the property is, the property is within the Quizzed Harbor Watershed. The sections of that section of the bylaw referred to were not sections that create the jurisdiction. As such, the limit for this property would be six bedrooms. There are at least six, and I believe, seven, according to the septic system report in the main dwellings, so one more makes eight. So, it's either seven or eight, but that's more than six. There are other criteria set forth in the bylaws. The reference to source of water, that's a criteria that the board can consider. We were not suggesting that there was not water to do destruction, just suggesting that the Water Department had raised some concerns. And I hope particularly is that they will require that there be a meter, so it's a factor to consider. The other factor that we wanted to note is the suitability of the site for the proposed use. The accessory structure wasn't suitable in 1996. The board was emphatic about that. And nothing has changed vis-à-vis the site. I understand the law has changed, but the criteria is not the law, it's the site. There's nothing that's changed in the site that renders it any more suitable now than it was then. One other thing I wanted to mention is that I don't believe there's a referral yet from the Building Department, which, and the plans as submitted today or yesterday, I think today, as revised, it's not clear to me, I'm not an architect, I'm not a code enforcer, but I think, I don't, without the Building Department passing on this, it's not clear whether this complies with any building or other codes. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Some questions?
Oh, sure.
I think it was Timmy Mott that said, because of the length of time that this was non-conform, the bylaws now say it is conform, because it's, they're not conforming for so long. I might be misstating that, but I think that's essentially what he said. Do you agree with that?
Yeah. I said, in my testimony right here, is that it was in violation at the time it was built. It is non-conforming. Query whether that's not still in violation and otherwise permitted, but that's probably a legal nuance. But my point is that it was built in violation.
I understand your opinion that this is in the Coastal Pond Overlay. This might be a question for Sirree. Who in town determines that? Do we look on a map and say, "Ain't it..." Oh, any other member of the board?
It's on the overlay maps. This is not in the Coastal Pond Overlay District.
And I respectfully disagree, and it's not just on the overlay...
I'm just going by what the town records show.
Understood. And that's fine. But the bylaw itself doesn't limit itself to what the map says. There is text in the bylaw that refers to other...
To the board, not me. I'm not the board.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
But I recognize there's a disagreement about that, and I, my understanding, there is an uncertainty amongst people who consider these issues as to where, what constitutes the Coastal Pond Overlay District. Our position is that it is within the district, and therefore, the requirement applies. I understand that others disagree. I don't know who the final operator of that is, that the board, maybe the others, but we respectfully disagree.
I have another question if I come around to the board again, and that's regarding the definitions of, I guess it's 240-23I, 3B, which is a moment brought forward. Would you contend that if a criminal was issued, and I guess you certainly shouldn't issue, but it was issued, it could not, the structure of the accessory apartment could not be built until such time as the owner occupied, that lived... until such time as the owner occupied, that lived there for seven months, in that requirement?
I would agree with that conclusion.
Okay, thank you.
Who else has questions?
I do. So you just said, I just want to understand. So in your letter that you submit today, I did have an opportunity to read it, and there's a statement to the effect that as the maximum billing hike for an accessory structure under the zoning bylaws now in effect is still 18 feet, the accessory structure is still in violation of the zoning bylaws.
Right. A non-conforming structure is in violation and should be permitted.
But it's, but, under 40A Section 7, it's been in place for 10 years now. So it's not only not subject to enforcement any longer. It's also rendered, I think, under the recent change, lawfully non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming.
Right. It's still in violation of the requirement, but it is lawfully non-conforming. Non-conforming by definition means you're not, you are not conforming. You're in violation, but you're allowed to stay.
Right.
You're allowed to continue.
I'm just confirming that because when I read that earlier, I thought it sounded as if you were saying it's not lawfully.
No, and of course, the tenured statutes apply irrespective of how you characterize that. That wasn't the point. The point was that it was built in violation, and it is, it's still in violation, though it's allowed to stay.
Right, okay. I think Attorney Amet brought up, I thought was a good point. So what is the impact of this upon your client, I suppose? Where's your client's property? I know you said surrounding it, and is that developed property? Is it undeveloped?
It's undeveloped property.
Okay.
And I, probably best if my client speaks to the impact because I suppose the question is perhaps more personal rather than legal, but you can answer that. I'm not sure there are criteria in the bylaw that suggest that somehow it has to adversely affect my client to have an objection.
No, I'm just asking if there is any impact upon your client.
And there is, and she's here and she can testify.
Okay.
A lot better than I can.
All right, that was all I had.
Okay, is that it for the board at this time? Okay, let's see.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
Hi, class.
She's too tired.
Too many.
Everybody's tired, I'm sorry. I'm Marky Cruz, my assistant. Could you, could you talk into the microphone, please?
You can take the microphone out if you would like.
I don't have wireless. I had a trouble with.
Okay, again, typically, we limit discussion to two minutes, so I think your attorney went on for more than that. Brief, though, we won't. Well, the first attorney is entitled.
Anyway, the, just review, I don't think I really need to, to increase the number of small rental dwellings available, particularly for young adult citizens, and to allow aging in place, promote economic and energy-efficient use of the town and the housing supply. The intent of the applicant said, well, to improve the value and saleability of her property, and the property is currently listed for $2.2 million. The clear, the bylaw says, the requirement is the owner is to either occupy the principal dwelling or the, in the future, the accessory for seven months of each year. The Warner's have not lived in this property for at least seven years. I've owned the abutting property, so that's why I said at least. I felt it was not good for me to say more, but my parents owned the property beforehand, so I have been around, and they have listed the properties, went up for sale for, with vacation rental by owner, and it is absolutely no doubt in my mind, they have not lived in this property for maybe a couple of weekends, a few summers. What, you asked what impact it has on me as the abutter. As mentioned, it's undeveloped property. I don't, you know, it may, I may develop it later. I, the property line, the building is 12 feet from my property line. It's very close. So, but that's the real reason I'm doing this is because of the waters of Falmouth, Massachusetts. Falmouth is only as good as it waters. Quistit Harbor is considered an impaired harbor by the Massachusetts Estuary Project. This map I got from the Massachusetts Estuary property. The house is about 850 feet from Quistit Harbor, and this is just giving you a reference. This is, you know, of where the information I got from. And just to give you also some of the data is that the ideal, one of the problems with our waterways is our nitrogen levels are too high, and Falmouth is being very active in trying to reduce the nitrogen levels in their bodies of water. Quistits are, Quistit Harbor currently is at 3.38 kilograms per day, and they are wished to get reduced to 2.65 kilograms a day. Town of, the town of Falmouth is required to restore Quistit Harbor. This is not just like we wish to, it is required by the EPA. And I sat in on Water Quality Committee meeting this afternoon, and they are actively, as you all know, probably working to reduce the nitrogen in their water. So my motivation is to make sure that whatever happens to this property or future properties in the Falmouth area is that we do the best for our town. And the other question is the coastal pond overlay. I initially got on the town map and looked up the coastal pond overlay and said, "Oh, it's not on the map." But then, when I spoke to other members, particularly on Water Quality Committee, they said, "No, absolutely not." Quistit Harbor, because it is listed in the Massachusetts Estuary Project, is definitely under the coastal pond. And in fact, the zoning bylaw said that all estuaries should be considered in the coastal pond. So that is two different opinions. It's obviously something that the town used to decide, but I think it's pretty clear that if you really care much about water, you're going to want to make sure that you have less nitrogen. I also looked at your own bylaws, and this Water Resource Protection Guide, which I had a little trouble finding, it's actually sort of something that was set up for the Aquifer, looking at our water table. And again, this has been through, you know, how many bedrooms should be allowed? We've already heard about this. Can only, if you do the math, have 5.6 bedrooms, can't have a 6.6 bedroom, so let's say seven. And the current house has had six to seven, depending on what document you look at, and even adding one bedroom in an apartment without a nitrogen removal system would be a negative impact on the waterways of Falmouth, Massachusetts. The other thing that also my neighbor's member brought up, I thought, this map, this is a tax map, and this is the Warner's main house here, this is the garage, and driveway comes right up through here, and bisects the McCrowers' property. They have a house, a garage here and a house here. And blue, the driveway, the driveway is one step from their door, and there's another property. This is a one-way, I wouldn't even say, it would not be considered a proper driveway in this day and age, it's just a lane. So just to even add another residence, you're going to have a way, more traffic, not particularly, even sidewalks, it'll be that. Yeah. These are the old drawings, I have not seen the new drawings. This, these, so just slide that in, too. Slide it. All right. Old drawings, remove that. We must do that. Slide it. Slide it. All right, summary, like two minutes. Property currently up for sale, owner has never lived in his dwelling for seven months per year. Basically, running a vacation rental by owner. It's located in Quistit watershed, and neither septic system has nitrogen removal system. The design, and I think with the new design, I have not seen it, was so poorly drawn, it was impossible for me to figure out what the square footage was. And Woodruff Lane is very narrow, driveway that bisects the neighbor's property, dangerous to add another residence to this driveway. And clearly, the owner's ability to self-monetize his apartment is questioned, especially if they're selling it and never here, would be questioned. Thank you.
Okay, question? Yeah.
Your testimony is that another board maybe that is here, but because this is in a impaired waterway, that by definition is part of our coastal lay overlay. Okay, that's what your testimony is?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you want?
No, no, thanks.
That's the information, that is the information.
So that's why we're doing this here?
No, I appreciate, I just wanted to make sure.
I just, let's not dwell on that too much because frankly, it's not relevant. The accessory apartment bylaw makes no reference to the coastal pond overlay district.
Yes, it does. Clearly does.
It does.
It does.
But it is not, according to zoning, in a coastal overlay.
It's not, as Attorney Amet said, it's not a subdivision of five acres of land.
I guess that's amount of discussion for the board. Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I am an abutter who will really be in danger.
I'm sorry, we need your name for the record.
My name is Louise McCrow, and you have my letter there.
I'll get it.
No, now it's up. And we live.
Take the microphone, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
My husband grew up, I don't really take the microphone. My husband grew up in this house, and my in-laws purchased this house, which is an unheated cottage.
Use the microphone.
And a garage. So this is 267 Quistit Avenue, and this is 11 Woodruff Lane, and the access to the Warner's property, so this is a private way, so we are responsible. This is the Mathers', so we are abutters and responsible for the lane up to the Warner's property. So whatever happens there will be very significant to us. If the bylaw was adhered to, it would be a really good thing. It would mean if somebody was there for seven months of the year, that would be fantastic. But this, in all the time we've been there, and my husband's been there since 1950, 1950, and I've been there since 1972, it has been a summer house. So my concerns that Chairman Foreman brought up are the prospective permitting, the prospective offering of this, this special permit, this accessory apartment, hoping that there would be compliance, or presuming there would be compliance. Now, Attorney Amet said the Commodores were only in there one summer. It's not exactly true. The Commodores were in there so many summers, but we only complained on the final summer. I mean, there were parties, whatever. But that, again, is history. But I just wonder what assurance I can have as a citizen of Falmouth that I'm not going to have to be the enforcer, the complainer. They're supposed to be there seven months, but they're not. Who do I go to? Do I go to the building department like we did before? What do we do if there's underwear hanging on the trees? You know, I, which there was. I don't, and I've got little grandchildren, and if, so their VRBO status, where they were just packing lots of people into their property, this was a hardship. So again, if the accessory apartment provides a one-room apartment for somebody in Falmouth who would not normally be able to afford it, that's one thing. I, I don't see that this is the use that they're advertising, or that they, so I don't know how you can issue a permit for prospective use. Are you going to attach it to the deed? I don't know. Those are my questions, and I hope you have some sympathy for this order.
Could I answer a question?
Yeah.
If I heard you correctly, if it was to be granted, and the special permit required the seven-month occupancy, then, and it's enforced by the enforcement standards, I think there's a letter, something like that, does that alleviate your concerns? Because I think it's obvious that the current owners are probably not there seven months, but I think we're talking, I mean, your concern, I'm talking about your concern, assurances that a prospective owner or prospective use of this would be occupying.
I'm not sure what assurances you could give me. If somebody wants to send you a letter once a year, I mean, I would feel a lot better if you waited to see who bought the property, and if they applied for a special permit, and they said, "We are going to live there seven months of the year," I would be all in favor.
Pass it to him.
If, it's too, there are too many variables, and who knows what the new owners are going to do.
You should be using the mic, I gotta say.
And then, and what constitutes residency? As I said in my letter, if they come down once a week, once every weekend for a month, you're not out, or.
The microphone's.
Who's going to be the, I.
Yeah, I think we, I think we, we understand your concern.
I'm very frustrated, and I, I do want to thank Suri very much for her help over the phone and emailing me stuff. I really appreciate that service to this Falmouth citizen. I think that's all.
All right, let's see if there's any other, can we, we have so far not adhered to the two-minute limit. I would really like to ask if we do, because it's almost nine o'clock now. So Ellie, go ahead.
Thank you.
And you need to grab the mic and, or bring it over to us.
Good evening. My name is Ellie Shaver, and I've been a resident of Falmouth for 45 years. For the last 18 years, I have volunteered in several programs addressing the needs of the homeless on the Cape and in Falmouth. The primary factor that causes a person to become homeless is the lack of affordable housing. This is true everywhere, including here in Falmouth. Falmouth has wisely created a new bylaw conceived expressly to address the lack of affordable housing, small unit housing in the town of Falmouth. It is not intended to increase the value of property for resale. The Warner property is currently on the market for sale. The Warner's do not reside there. How can a request for an accessory apartment be submitted by a non-resident owner whose clear intent is to sell the property at increased value? Ought not this application for an accessory apartment at 18 Woodruff Lane be brought to the board by the new owner who has established a seven-month residency? I respectfully believe that the Warner Trust application constitutes an abuse of this new and important accessory unit bylaw. If the application is approved, it will set a precedent for future exploitation. Thank you.
Yeah, Virginia?
Do you want to take the zone?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I.
I'm Virginia Valiega. I am speaking as a private citizen, but with a background as a town meeting member for many, many years, and also as a member of Water Quality Management.
Here we go.
Acting as a citizen, I sat with the planning board while crafting the accessory apartment bylaw. And I was particularly concerned about the increased indecency that would occur with this bylaw, recognizing at the same time the great importance that this provides in terms of housing to the town. And so I specifically asked them about the impacts of additional nitrogen. What you're looking at is a map of the 15 impaired estuaries in the town. There are studies done on each one of these. Each one has a total maximum daily load that is or has already or will be established, and the town needs to meet that. My question to the, to the planning board at the time the accessory apartment bylaw was being crafted was, you do have a mapped area of coastal pond overlay, but it doesn't include all of the 15 impaired watersheds, and they said, "You're right." So they started, they did some changes to that bylaw. And it was my understanding that the bylaw as finally issued covered any impaired estuary. And so I see you simply shaking your head.
It hasn't shown up in any of the maps.
I can give you a copy here.
Okay. I, I'm just telling you that that was what they said, and, and that was certainly what the committee, the Water Quality Management Committee, was under the impression of. If there is a defect in this, then, you know, that clearly needs to be. If there is a defect in this, then, you know, that clearly needs to be rectified. This property is quite close to Quistet Harbor. The nitrate from this property gets into, in a Quistet Harbor, which is the most impaired part of that watershed, and that is concerning. I also want to record that the Cape Cod Commission and the town track water use records. And normally, a residential house uses 150 gallons per day. You might find a big house using 300. The use on record for this property is 612 gallons per day. So there apparently are not residents there, but there are a lot of people living there. And so this is a real...
Can I ask you, is that year-round?
That's a daily average.
Daily?
It's a daily average. They have records for multiple years, and then that's a daily average. And that's how you compare one area to another. So I think that there are real concerns about this. I do think it was useful to continue this hearing. We have asked for a meeting with the planning board and to go over why it sounds, it appears that there's this disagreement as to whether a property that is not mapped, but is listed, is not affected by the coastal pond overlay district. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so I actually misspoke, and I apologize, because it does clearly state that coastal overlay district is...
Is part of it, yes.
Is part of it, and Quistet Harbor is listed as a high-quality area under the coastal pond overlay.
Well, this property does not show in any of the town records that we've seen, because that's what we go by when we look up these things. So if the bylaw's been changed, we don't know.
So maybe the question is, where's the boundary?
It's not, it's really not part of it.
I think ultimately it is...
Well, it certainly is referenced in the new bylaw, and this is a new bylaw, which is why, among other reasons, I had no... And certainly, Quistet Harbor is mentioned in the coastal pond overlay district as a high-quality area.
It is.
So the only question is where the boundaries are, the mapped boundaries.
Okay. All of the watersheds are mapped. There's no question that this property is within that mapped area.
Can we ask not to have side discussion back there?
All the water, the Quistet Harbor watershed is mapped. This is solidly in the middle of it.
Right, solidly in the middle. That's your testimony.
Look at the map. In the file.
A quick question. 600 gallons per day.
Do you put that over there?
That could, I might feel, it could include irrigation, it could include...
Sure.
So, you know, I mean, it's expensive number.
Well, it's an unusual number based on the database that we have looked at.
Yes, maybe they have a lead. What would you like?
I would like some board discussion, but you're the chair.
But you used to be the chair. I'm happy to have some board discussion if you want.
Well, I think we've just heard...
I just wanted to be sure we got...
Yes, no.
The two main sets of concerned people out there, and I think basically we got it covered if I look around. So, sure, let's have board discussion. Does that mean, Kim, that you have something particularly...
I don't know. I mean, I have notes to say, but I don't have to leave the discussion. I was just thinking it was past time.
Let's start with Jerry.
Okay, I always have something to say.
For the board.
For the board.
For the board.
For the board discussion.
Well, I mean, for the board discussion. I mean, I think without a doubt it is clear that this, the bylaw, it may be flawed, but TMDL areas or impaired waterways, maybe they should be, but they are not in there now. And that's a future rectification, even if the planning board agreed that it's not in the existing bylaw. So I don't know how we could pass on something that's clearly not in the bylaw, although the nutrient management plan is all intended. Maybe eventually they all will be considered coastal overlays at some future zone. I guess I have more of a concern with the requirement of 3B. It's clear to me that the current owners do not live there seven months, but it's not clear to me that before this is built or after it's built, it cannot be occupied unless the owners have been there for seven months. And this may be more of a legal question. I would think this could be a covenant, a reassignment, or whatever you want to mention. So it would be in full compliance with this.
Okay, DJ?
I don't think the planning board envisioned this when it came to the accessory, the new accessory bylaw. That's my comment for right now.
Okay.
Well, I think this is an unusual circumstance, where Jerry and I agree. It may be the first time. So I have a number of comments, I think. I think the board, obviously, we spoke in opposition at town meeting to this accessory apartment bylaw due to a number of concerns that were raised by the public today. Density, nitrogen, all those impacts that neighboring and interested Falmouth property owners are concerned about, and I think rightfully concerned about. That being said, town meeting passed this bylaw. So we need to look at what this bylaw requires. I think in terms of property, if we were just looking at the property, I think this is probably one of the best places in Falmouth to have something like this in an accessory structure, due to the size, due to the fact that they're not making any changes to the exterior. Falmouth has so many smaller lots on which these things are really going to create some issues. This is not one of them. I don't have any concerns about it being for sale. I think Attorney Oment addressed that properly, in my opinion. Somebody could have lived there for a year and come in, apply for this, and then sell it, turn around and sell it the day after they leave the board. The concern is whether or not they're going to comply with the use in the future. So it may be that somebody, we can't police, we can't police any of these decisions that we make. All we can do is set conditions. I think that if, in the future, somebody is going to exercise the special permit, and it has to be timely, it has to be within the set period of time, then they'll have to require, comply with these conditions. If, and if the current owner was to change their mind and stay on the property and wanted to exercise the special permit, they would have to comply with the conditions. So I see no trouble. I think we go down, in granting the special permit, I think it would go down a slippery slope to say, "Well, how long have you lived there? What's your intention? How long are you intending to live there in the future?" All we can do as a board is ensure that special permits are granted and subject to conditions. And I don't see any requirement that, you know, it's the owner that's applying for it that must, you know, remain there, and certainly, special permits don't run with the owner. They run with the property, so. And, you know, people have talked about exploitation. This isn't what the bylaw envisioned. But I think we said numerous times while the bylaw was being drafted and considered that there were significant, significant deficiencies in the bylaw. And I think that's my opinion. I think there's significant deficiencies in the bylaw. But it is what it is, and it allows for a property owner to do this, just as any other property owner, in my opinion, would be permitted to do anything on their property, get certain special permits, and some of those add value to the property, just as the nature of it. I don't think that we should penalize somebody for doing something that's legal. Just a couple other comments. The right-of-way, that's private property considerations, and there may be other concerns about that. So that's where, oh, I think just eliminating access to the recreation area if we were to approve it, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think the altered plan, as Attorney Oment submitted it, makes a lot of sense. And I would also just, I think it would be helpful to kind of review and maybe narrow and or pinpoint some of these, the argument regarding the commercial, the coastal pond overlay district. As I read subsection F, I think it's referring to our actual overlay districts, Water Resource Protection or Coastal Pond Overlay District. And maybe it should refer more broadly, but I think we would have to, or I would have to analyze the language more closely. So that's my two cents.
I'd just be concerned whether 650 gallons of water is going every day.
I agree with Kim 100 percent. I think this application was properly prepared. You know, there are, there were flaws in this bylaw, but, you know, there was a time to take care of that, that people at town meetings spoke. This idea of when they're, who's living there, for how long, forget it. It's totally unenforceable. The board will, if grants this special permit, will condition it. That's all we can do. And I, you know, I have no objection to what was proposed tonight at all.
On the layout of the apartment, I think you have to get rid of the access to recreational spaces. Too easy to expand in that area. I think they can do it. Same comments with the bylaw. It just is a flaw. They didn't write in there that you couldn't apply for the bylaw if you didn't live at the property. Just that you need to live there to comply to actually have the occupancy of the unit. So I think you're kind of stuck in that situation.
Well, I'd like to have my day in court here. I think it's real simple. The principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year. There's no evidence that it is. And, you know, therefore, I don't think it qualifies under the bylaw. You know, we're not talking about what could be. We're talking about what is currently, the situation. That's the basis on which, it seems to me, we judge this application. Secondly, in terms of the coastal pond overlay district, I believe this is in the coastal pond overlay district. The outer Quistet Harbor is clearly identified as a high stabilization area in section 24100. 24100 is clearly referenced in section 24097, which talks about coastal pond overlay districts. So I don't think there's any ambiguity there. What the bylaw recommends in that case is the limitation of the number of bedrooms and the implementation of onsite nitrogen removal. So not to say that this couldn't happen, but if it did happen, then I think it would have to conform with respect to the total number of bedrooms, and we could impose nitrogen removal requirements. But to me, the key thing is, based on the use currently, it doesn't qualify because there's no one occupying the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment for more than, for seven months. It's just that simple, in my view. Yeah?
I think, I think we understand the enforcement may not be what we want it to be. But there is an enforcement provision in the bylaw that goes to the building commissioner and someone probably complained to the building commissioner. And I would think the records could be clear that if the person's a resident, they can't have a resident someplace else, and I don't want to be speculating. But I'd hate to have the public record show that we think this bylaw is not enforceable. The enforceability may not be as strong as some members want, but I think there's an enforcement section. Could you repeat, or maybe we could ask for a legal opinion on your nexus of why you think this is in the coastal overlay?
Can I repeat?
Well, you referred to a section of...
I am saying that according to the town records and the overlay maps, this property is not within an overlay. According to the zoning bylaw... What can I...
Okay, well, let's see if I can find the actual language. "Special permit uses are filed in accordance with article 32 of this chapter within 2,000 feet of those water bodies listed in section 24100 that do not have defined water bodies." Let's see, "The articles shall apply to all developments listed here," okay? This is the establishment and delineation of coastal pond overlay district, 24098, actually. So C is that this applies to to properties, I guess, that are within 2,000 feet of those water bodies listed in 24100 that do not have defined recharge water bodies. And if you go to 24100, outer Quistet Harbor from the entrance, inland 1,400 feet, is listed.
But those are, that calls for developments, and I'm not in disagreement...
It does, it does, so that as traditionally interpreted...
I'm not in disagreement with you, Kim. I'm just saying that the map doesn't show this, which is what we go by.
This only applied to subdivisions of five acres or more, five lots or more. However, the new coastal pond, the new apartment, accessory apartment bylaw specifically references. So I think, and if I'm reading that correctly, I would say that now makes that section applicable to the consideration.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm stating that the coastal pond overlay that the town shows of what properties are in that overlay district does not show this property or any of them in this coastal pond overlay. That's all I'm saying.
Well, what...
And that's what we go by when we get an application. So I'm not in disagreement. I'm just stating the facts.
Yeah, I feel, is it within 2,000 feet of Quistet Harbor?
Yes.
So there you go. It's just that simple.
Again, again, I'm stating what we have to go by. It's not shown on our GIS map and on our town records. You could look at the assessors' records, and it won't say coastal pond.
I raise my hand for once.
Yes. I'm shocked.
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just stating a fact.
I don't know if we can resolve it tonight.
We may not.
Okay, well, one, you continue, so I have... One of the critics of both ways...
It's almost 9:30.
As to legality.
Why can't we resolve it then?
I just became aware.
The only thing I want to say about resolving it tonight is, I'm not sure what additional information we will get. We'll get additional opinions, but facts, I'm not so sure. But let's see. Bob clearly wants to say something, so let's have him.
Well, the coastal pond would require a D-Nite system.
Thank you. I have a few things I want to say. Mr. Foreman, you just referred to 24098C as the basis, but you skipped over, you mentioned it once, and you skipped over, you didn't inquire as to what article 32 is. Article 32 is very specific. It concerns special permit applications for elderly housing. So this article applies to developments of subdivisions five lots or greater than five acres. Commercial development requiring site plan review. And special permits involving article 32 of the chapter, which is limited to public or nonprofit housing for the elderly. This is not a lot to which the coastal pond overlay district applies. Because it's pretty clear, it only applies to lots and subdivisions greater than five lots or greater than five acres. Now, even if it did apply, it seems to be agreement that, Attorney Lynch agreed, there could be six bedrooms on this lot. We have a five-bedroom house, as far as Title V is concerned, and a one-bedroom proposed apartment. We do not count number of bedrooms in a house of this size by looking at every room that could be used as a bedroom. So if the number is six, we actually comply. We have a house that, for Title V purposes, is considered, and we're proposing one bedroom. There is a lawn sprinkler system on this property. I'm hearing about this water usage for the first time tonight. I don't know the basis of it. Why is that? But I will tell you that there is a water sprinkler system. Now, there is case law, including recent case law, that says that has overturned the decision of a Board of Appeals that denied zoning relief because it was clear from the decision that it was based on past violations of the owner of the property. You can't do that, and you shouldn't do that. And we're talking about violations that occurred in the 1990s, which were the subject of special permit hearings. I urge you not to be taken into account the past, but looking prospectively. I urge you not to be taking into account the past, but looking prospectively. Mr. Foreman says that the requirement of living in either the accessory apartment or the principal dwelling is something that you look back to see if it's occurred. No, because accessory apartment wasn't even allowed, you know, as at the time it would be permitted. Yes, you have to live in one or the other, ones they're created. It is a condition of the, of the allowing of a special permit. And we have all kinds of special permits that are issued, again, that are subject to conditions and the structures don't exist, don't get permission to, to build and use them, again, subject to conditions. But those are the main points I wanted to refer to.
Okay, so, yes.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to address Attorney Amet's representation that there are only five bedrooms in the principal dwelling. He represented at the planning board that there was six to seven. He represented earlier in this hearing and believed that there were six. And the Title V inspection report that he submitted to the board says there are seven. Thank you.
Well, I would add that the, in the material submitted, on the floor plan, it shows seven bedrooms.
It's not a correct addition.
But I thought we had testimony that, that I don't know if it's part of the Title V, but the way they counted and it's on the map.
It's a formula.
It's a formula.
It's a formula.
It's my body draft, not an issue per se.
I'm just saying, one of these rooms could have been designated a den if they weren't on the plan that says.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure unless we go to Knights, if it maps, just my opinion.
And also, you guys, the notes, the notes on the plan from the land surveyor identifies it as not being within a coastal pond overlay district. And it's a registered land surveyor.
What's the size of the lot again? Is this supposed to be?
One point.
So how many square?
One point two nine acres.
Just over an acre.
So was that, that's.
So it's approximately 57,000 square feet, I think.
56,000.
1.29 acres.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a quick calculation in my head, I was wrong.
It's all right, of course.
Okay, so what's the, what's the pleasure of the board?
I think we can get it done tonight.
At this point, do you want to, do you feel we've heard enough that we could close this? Is there some clarification you would like?
I apologize, I'm so sorry.
Are you coughing or do you have something you want to say?
Just bear, just keep in mind that you don't have a site plan review.
Right.
So you might want to, if you do go forward tonight, you might want to take it under advisement to allow the planning board to submit.
Well, I would submit that we keep, I think there's a couple of things that are ambiguous. The issue of whether this is or is not in the coastal pond overlay district is ambiguous, for sure. You know, if, if it is, it doesn't mean that we, we can't approve it. It just means that we would then be able to include additional restrictions such as the, you know, request to, that they, or a requirement that they put in a D-9 system.
So this board, same as this board will make that determination as opposed?
Well, I'm saying there might be additional information that we could get from.
Do they have two septic?
Planning department. The second one is that I agree with Ceri that the site plan review would be, would be good to get.
You usually never, excuse me, Kim, I'm sorry, usually never make a determination without that site plan review.
So I think maybe it makes sense to continue this.
But underneath that is a clarifying paragraph, which says, which is an overlay district, blah, 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 the district is depicted on a map entitled recharge areas of coastal ponds. I, 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 don't get your nexus, maybe I don't have to, this is not a really known one.
Well, no, that, so that may be the issue. Maybe the recharge area defined for Quessett was an old one, it's not accurate, I don't know. How, where, it does not indicate where that map is.
There's a reference to it, isn't there? I mean, the town, it was passed by, you know, Falltime, yeah.
Oh, yeah, in 2001. So that's, you know, so maybe that's, could be an issue. What do we do about the extensive studies that have been done by the, you know, in the interim between now and then? Do they have the force of law? Maybe not.
Well, I would think that we could, that could be a clear legal opinion that none of our bylaws are precise. And there's a lot of things I would have liked to see where the TMDL areas superimposed, but they're not. So we're, we're projecting what we would think or what we would like versus trying to predict what there is and what the clients allow or what the opponents disagree with the client, oh, they put on it.
What we want to deal with right now is, do we just continue this to get the answers to these questions?
I'm opposed to continuing. I don't want to continue, I don't want to vote on.
We'll take a vote.
No, that's fine, but you guys, this is a registered land surveyor. They seldom make mistakes like that when they prepare plans. I don't know why we're questioning whether or not this is.
Is that Tom, who is that? Is that somebody who's familiar with our bylaw?
It's Tom Bunker, yeah.
It's registered.
I mean, why would we think that was erroneous?
Does it show both septics on that plan? I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah.
Because there's two septics.
Yeah, it does.
There are two septics.
Went to the accessory and went to the main.
So what? That doesn't change.
Because it does affect the Board of Health's determination and they're the ones who would require D-9.
Well, not necessarily under this bylaw.
Do you want to? Well.
Under this bylaw, it implies we can.
According to the overlay maps.
Yes.
That's what I'm going by.
Right, and the ambiguity is, we don't have a copy of the referenced overlay map. So I would like to get that.
It's in the file, the one that the town has. It's in the file. It's always in the file. It's underneath the application.
Well, you're looking for that.
And it's in your packets that's sent to you as well.
Go ahead, Bob.
Are we going to, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about continuing that.
I'd like to make a couple of suggestions for you that, that might address your concerns. First of all, you could require that we obtain an opinion, I think we could get it from David Carrigan or from a surveyor, that the total number of bedrooms as defined in Title V shall not exceed six. Because that's the case. Because I believe that even if we were in the coastal pond overlay district or if it applied, that we can still meet that requirement. A second thing you can do, you know, we have a certain number of existing rooms that are identified on a plan as bedroom that can be used as bedrooms even if Title V doesn't count the septic requirements that way. A condition that would require that one of the bedrooms be modified so as not to be used as a bedroom in substitution for the bedroom that we're proposing in the small one-bedroom apartment, I think could be deemed to address the condition, which is an exception in the coastal pond overlay district, that if the applicant can show that there is no increase in the nutrient to the water body, that's an exception to the requirement for D-9 notification in the coastal pond overlay district. So I think you could craft a decision that would meet that standard for the reason I just suggested. I'll just end that, this comment by saying that even if we're in the coastal pond overlay district, the way it reads, it only applies to those lots which are described as in subdivisions of five or more lots or five acres. That's what it says.
Well, there's a conflict though, because the new, this, this new bylaw on accessory apartments, which post dates that.
Yes, it says if you're, if you're subject to the coastal pond overlay district, we're not, this lot is not subject to the coastal pond overlay district if it isn't part of a six-lot subdivision, or five-lot subdivision, it's five or four.
Well, that's an interesting question of the language, whether it's subject, what if it had said, instead of subject to, within? How would you interpret it then?
I think if there had been a specific distance specified, that if you're within a certain distance, you have to do D-9 notification, fine. But that's not what the bylaw says. It's not what the bylaw says. So I'm suggesting a way out.
Yeah.
Require that we're going to trade the bedrooms and then there's no increase in, in nitrogen flow as a result of the granting of this application. I think we can do that. Because I don't think that these rooms, this is exactly what Title V is based on, these rooms aren't all used as bedrooms.
Can I make a motion that we go past 9:30 until 10?
Okay, seconded by anyone?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
What'd you vote?
Well, after 9:00.
So I'm still, we're still trying to determine, are we going to ask for some additional information, interpretation? We have the site plan issue, we might want to get some feedback from Board of Health, we might want to get.
Could all that be subject to submission? I mean, I think the biggest question was, does the board, voting members of the board want to continue it or not? If the answer is no, oh, yes, then either way, we can get the information.
The bylaw requires site plan review.
Right, it's, so, yeah, in 240-216.
So why don't we continue this?
The decision of, that in our determination, we need to consider the decision of the planning board. That's 240-216H.
So we can't consider that if we don't have.
And I think it might be helpful to have Attorney Amet's alternative submitted in writing that you just suggested.
So I would be happy to entertain a motion that we continue.
I'll move to continue application 9217, two. Ceri, what works?
Unfortunately, January 25th is about the only night we can do it.
Okay, so I will move to January 25th, 2017, at 6:30. At 2018, excuse me.
Unless we're going back in time.
We're not. At 6:30.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Carrie's.
Who's Carrie?
I oppose it.
Four to one. All right, that's.
So does Attorney Amet realize what he has to submit?
I don't know.
Do you? I mean, let's make it clear, because I'm going to be hugging him.
So revised, a revised plan showing a reduction by one bedroom through the changing in the casement of the door or something like that, right? That's what you talked about.
No access to the rec.
And something that makes more definitive, especially with the access issues. Okay. And then I think we'd like some, more from town departments, we'd like some clearer statement of the coastal pond overlay district limitations. Because, well, we have submission here that shows recharge areas, and then we have.
That's not a town, that's a committee.
Yeah. I'll get, do you want me to talk with Brian Currie?
I'd like to find out more about how these things reconcile.
Well, well said. I agree with you, I don't.
All right, we have another hearing.
That's it? Yep, so the next, Carrie.
I had to oppose it, I was, you know.
You standing up.
Yeah.
Oh, there's no map in the bylaws.
There's no map.
You want to move on?
There was no map in the file.
Yeah, there is.
Happily moving on.
Okay, so the next hearing is 094-17, Harwood, Fourth Spinnaker Lane, Falmouth. Special permit to enclose a portion of a deck and construct a second floor addition. And I ask, please, no discussion, please, we're continuing our, our, our business here.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section 11 of chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General laws, you are hereby notified that Brent Dean Sally R. Harwood of Westboro, Massachusetts, applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-3C of the Code of Falmouth to enclose a portion of the first floor deck and in addition to the second floor, increasing habitable space within the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as Fourth Spinnaker Lane, Falmouth, Massachusetts. Comments or lipos? Engineering had its standard comment. Any connections or operations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or rights away. This plan requires endorsement by a professional land surveyor since it includes property line geometry and distances referencing them. COMCOM had no comment. Assessors includes lots three and four. Planning had no comment.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record. My name is Captain Flower, Attorney with Amet Flower Law firm here in Falmouth. And I represent Brent D. Harwood and Sally R. Harwood, the owners of Fourth Spinnaker Lane in Falmouth. I don't think the speakers in the last hearing were very good at getting their comments to two minutes, but I'm going to try to keep my presentation to two minutes, so we can defend this. This property is located at Fourth Spinnaker Lane, which is the corner of Spinnaker Lane and Clinton Avenue, just off of Sur Drive. The lot is 24,517 square feet, located in a residential C zoning district. The existing dwelling is a five-bedroom, one and a half-story house with a footprint of approximately 2,834 square feet and a height of 23 feet 10 inches. The lot also contains an accessory garage with a footprint of 660 square feet. Total foot, existing footprint by structure is 3494, which is 14.3 percent of the lot. The application that I submit describes the footprint of the house as 3,494, which is quite accurate, that includes the footprint of the garage. This house is non-conforming as to side yard setback. It's 7.6 feet from the side yard to the house where 10 feet is required. And there's also a side yard setback non-conforming from the garage of 6.7 feet where again 10 feet is required. There is potentially a front yard setback issue because the house is 24.8 feet from Spinnaker Lane where 25 feet would be required. Otherwise, this property complies with the bylaw book as to lot coverage and other setbacks. The applicant is seeking permission this evening to make renovations in both the interior and exterior of their home. They're seeking to reconfigure the existing layout, and doing so, they're eliminating some of the existing rooms and increasing the size of some, the size of some of the remaining rooms. This will result in a far better use of space for the applicant. They're also seeking to expand the first floor over a portion of the existing deck, and in doing so, will be adding a small group deck above that area. They're removing the remainder of the existing ground level deck in favor of a blue stone patio. The proposed additions and renovations will not impact the existing non-conformities, will not result in the creation of any new non-conformities. The roof line of the proposed addition area will be approximately 10 feet in height, which is well below the 23 feet 8 inches that exists and the, even further below the 35 feet that is allowed by right in this district. There's no increase to the number of bedrooms on the property, that will remain five. This project requires a special permit from this board under section 240-3C of the zoning bylaw, which allows for pre-existing non-conforming structures to be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantial more than the current existing. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240-216 and whether the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, adheres to views of vistas and reasonably conforms to the arrows mentioned in the neighborhood. In this case, the non-conforming aspects of the property remain unchanged. The additions on the west side of the house, which is on the opposite side from the non-conformity, and there's ample side yard setback in that area. There's no detriments relative to the existing structure. It will not cause any adverse effects. There's no new non-conformity, there's no public view of vista that will be impaired. The project meets the standards of 240-216. One issue I thought worth of note was that this is unusual and it actually reduces the total square footage by, by structure, is a reduction of 236 square feet of the size of the existing structure, which reduced the overall lot coverage by 1 percent. As I mentioned earlier, this is a corner lot on the corner of Clinton and Spinnaker Avenue. It is 24.8 feet from Spinnaker and 27 feet from Clinton. I did meet with Rod Palmer earlier this week and obtained a determination that Clinton is in fact a front yard designation pursuant to the bylaw. That designation was submitted to the board earlier this week. In addition, in response to the engineering comment, the plan had been prepared by, by Mike Porcelli's office of Falmouth Engineering. His plans are usually stamped by Gary LaBrie. I had submitted, the original application contained a plan that had not been stamped that had not been stamped by Gary. However, one was submitted to the board this afternoon. So that is on file. And that's the exact same plan that was submitted with the application which is there in Gary's stamp as well. Based on this information, I'd ask that you grant the special permit, but I'd be happy to address any questions the board might have at this time.
Okay. Robert, anything?
No questions. No, thanks, Kim.
When I made a site visit, I noticed a substantial amount of construction going on.
The projects being phased, the existing construction that's happening did not require any special permits. So they're doing some interior work on the first floor, but none of that was triggering of a special permit.
They're doing significant work on the second floor. Full front of the building, brand new.
Yep.
Second floor.
For the record, Mark Bogosian, builder of the project. Yeah, we had made a plan and originally did not plan on expanding the footprint. But after we got into the project, they realized that they wanted some more space and then I realized the special permit was going to be needed. So we get Kevin involved, and here we are.
Kim, anything?
No.
I'm shocked.
It's not over yet.
TJ, you probably have a long list of questions.
I do not.
I have no questions.
So I'm sorry, remind me why, what the non-conform, so the non-conformity.
Side yard setback to the existing garage and side yard setback to the house on the East Hurley sideline.
On the East Hurley side.
Mr. Foreman, do you look at his, right here. That's what's showing, 7.6 feet.
Mm-hmm. And that should be 10, I guess.
Should be 10. For a house of 10, it wouldn't be here.
Gotcha. Okay. And obviously, those are not being affected at all.
Correct.
And you're reducing the lot coverage.
We are.
So there you go. Okay. No questions. Anyone in the public? There's no one in the public. Chase them away. Okay.
I will move to close public hearing here, 9417.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Kim and Ed, all in favor?
Aye.
I will move to approve application, I just said, 9417.
Okay, I think that'd be two, yeah. Kim and Ed?
Okay.
Go, findings?
So findings, they're actually reducing lot coverage and total lot coverage, which is unusual. That alterations are on the side of the property. Not the, whatever, the non-conformities are not being impacted. Five bedrooms, remaining five bedrooms. 240 dash, was it, 3C, 3, and 240216. Approving the property. Anything else? And conditions per plans? Five bedrooms.
Okay. Yeah. All right, we're good. Ceri, we're good?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Good as conditioned and all in favor?
Aye.
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 That's it. Okay, there is just a little bit of additional business, I guess. There's the minutes of November 30th. Thank you.
Did anybody have time to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
All 18 pages. You do an excellent job. No, no, that was very good.
She fixed everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. We have an administrative approval request for a de minimis determination.
Right, over on 32 Fay Road, they were building a, constructing a new dwelling. And at the end, the surveyor found that the height of the house is 35.1 feet. So they're asking the board to make a de minimis determination. The house is what, over 200 feet, I think, from the road, isn't it? 200, let's see. They determined mean natural gate along the street side is 50.3 feet and the distance to the street, actually a private road, is either 85 feet or 200 feet of wooded land, depending on the arguable determination of a site street.
I'm impressed that they.
And this was submitted by the homeowner and the engineer is Holmes and McGrath.
Okay.
I will move that we find this de minimis.
Second.
Okay, let's have a very tiny vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that's done. Nothing more on procedural rules, I don't think. Or future agenda items, anything?
No, but hopefully, one day, we'll get to the procedural rules.
Okay, meaning in turn.
Change him.